Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 19th day of March 2021. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Please note, as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise their hand using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant's screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, a speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be immediately muted. The raise-and feature is not the same as a thumbs up icon or the applause icon. If you're having difficulty accessing this feature, use the Q&amp;A dialogue box to let tech support know, and they will try to assist you.
Carrie, before we move on, I note that there are two Tom Letizia's on the screen, one of them without video. Just wondering whether or not...
He may be using his phone also, so...
Okay. Or if he shared it with somebody, it may be somebody else. So if Tom could...
I was under the impression that only one Tom Letizia is allowed within Princeton.
I would think the same.
I didn't mean to scare the board with two of you. One is enough, right? I believe the other Tom Letizia would be a court reporter.
Oh, okay.
Lisa Bradley. So she could change her name, I think.
I can do it if she needs.
Or she could just write "not."
Lisa Bradley.
Yeah, I think we should ask her to confirm that it is her.
Not Lisa Bradley?
Yes, good evening, Board. This is Lisa Bradley, the court reporter.
Thank you.
Very good.
On behalf of you, Mr. Letizia, I assume, or your client? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So would you like to do a roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen?
He's here unmuted.
He's got his hand up.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. I am here.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan?
I'm here.
Mr. Oakman? Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Ms. Gunning?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Are there any announcements for the meeting this evening? Anyone?
Madam Chair, this is Louise. I want to quickly note that the Master Plan Committee met earlier this week. It was a nice meeting. It was also attended by several members of the public. Lasted about an hour and 10 minutes. And our next steps, we talked about the work ahead of us in terms of the ambitious, broad-based revamping of the community master plan. And the next step is for staff to draft a scope of work for consultant or consultant team and distribute that draft scope to members of the Master Plan Committee for review and comment and suggested edits. And they expect to have that draft out to committee members by the end of next week. So we're, as my father might say, we're off like a herd of angry turtles. We're underway.
And the comments on the draft and everything will be circulated to everyone?
We can do that. I think it probably would be, I think, once we feel like we've got close to a final draft of the scope of work, then we could circulate that to the full board for review and comment. Maybe that's what you were...
Well, no, I'm just... If you simply circulate things, you get a lot of the same comment from different people. It just doesn't save much time. So I was hoping that you had a plan for getting the comments put together and then being reviewed by the board. So anyway, you probably do.
I don't have a specific plan for that, but Michael and I can talk about that and figure out exactly how to make sure that happens.
Because it's very important to get these comments.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any announcements? No? Well, hearing none, let's move on to the substance of the meeting. Why don't we start with reviewing the findings of fact? This was the trustees of Princeton University and the Ivy Club. It was a minor site plan subdivision approval, 43 Prospect Avenue. And I believe Jerry Muller was going to open the discussion on this. Is that right, Jerry? Or since you were...
Yes, that's correct. And as I indicated before the meeting started, David and I and Michael had done some emailing back and forth. David had a couple of questions and concerns. And what we came up with, David, I'll do the one with respect to the stormwater, and if you could do the one with respect to the historic, that'd be great. On page, let's see. Well, at least in my draft, it's page eight. It's subsection E. First sentence says, "The general drainage pattern of the site will remain consistent with existing conditions. Site runoff will be conveyed to an onsite stormwater management system, which is designed to mimic or improve existing hydraulic conditions." That's a little misleading because it all eventually goes offsite into the university system. So I suggested, and I think David was comfortable with this, that we add right after hydraulic conditions, and from there into the university stormwater management system. So that's the one change. And in fact, we have a condition that basically says it has to be a note on the plan indicating that it's going into the university system. And David, you want to jump in on the other?
Yeah. The other had to do with the conditions relating to preserving or relocating some elements of the existing rear garden wall that are deemed of historic worth, and also replicating the brickwork pattern of that rear garden wall with the new rear garden wall that's going to be installed. So again, those changes felt to me that they should be reflected in Section 15D. And I was suggesting that... So just so you know how that reads currently, it says, "The proposed site is not located within a historic district. It does not contain any state or federally designated sites. The Ivy Club, however, is part of the Eating Club Row, has historical significance, and the aesthetics of the site will be improved. Given the above, this criterion has been satisfied." And I suggested adding the qualifier that the aesthetics of the site will be improved by relocating existing historic elements of the rear garden wall and replicating brickwork patterns as delineated in the conditions section of this resolution.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Improved by pictures, in some sense. Hard to imagine just which elements are going where.
Yeah.
With those edits, I'm happy to move that we approve this unless I'm jumping the gun. Don't want to jump the gun.
I think it's appropriate at this time for a motion unless any members of the board have any other comments or suggestions about the resolution.
Anyone?
Right. So I move approval as with the amendments discussed.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. It's been moved and seconded and approved. So I guess we can go on from there unless you want to vote on it, too.
I think there should be a vote.
So does somebody want to put up a motion?
Well, we had the motion. We had the second. It's just a question of calling or...
Roll call or vote? You want a roll call?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman? Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Thank you.
I vote yes, too. This is Louise.
I missed you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But since I moved it, I figured it should probably...
All right. Then the next item on the agenda, a pair of discussions. These are ordinance referrals. 2021-05 and 2021-09, they both refer to parking. 05 is banked parking. 09 is off-street parking exemption. Does someone have... I gather this must have gone other places beside this referral to us. Does anybody have any...
Chair Gunning, I can start off the discussion if you'd like.
That would be great.
Thank you. Before you tonight are, as the Chair mentioned, two draft ordinances. The Municipal Council has referred to the Planning Board these two ordinances for review and consideration for compliance with the Princeton Community Master Plan. They were both introduced on March 22 of this year, and they're scheduled for public hearing for the council on April 12, which is next Monday. The ordinances are 2021-05, which is what was referred to as banked parking, and I'll explain that in a moment, and 2021-09, which is the parking exemption ordinance. So I'll go into a little bit of detail about both of them. They amend Princeton's current parking regulations. The first one, the banked parking, which is 2021-05, applies to the actual number of parking spaces that initially would have to be constructed as part of site plan approval. It gives a developer and it gives the Planning Board the option to allow for less than the full total amount of parking in a site plan to be built initially at the start of the project. In other words, it lets the community and the developers see if all the parking that was approved is actually needed. So there's a chance that if it's not all needed to be constructed all at once, we could have a potential increase in green area or a decrease in impervious coverage. So that's sort of the intent and purpose of that one. The second ordinance, 2021-09... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, did I get these? That's right. I'm confusing myself because we're doing two at once. The second one is the off-street parking exemption. And that has almost more of an economic development purpose to it because right now in our business districts, particularly like in the central business district, if you have an existing space and a new use wants to go into that space, but according to our code, has a higher parking requirement, right now that will trigger either somehow the new use has to find, has to accommodate that new parking demand, or it has to reply for a variance, which of course involves time and money, and it may not be approved. So what this does is simply, what it does is it says, "Look, we have these existing commercial spaces in town. How do we make them viable?" And it pretty much eliminates the need to accommodate an increase in parking demand when the use changes from one use to a use with greater parking requirements. So that's the purpose of the second one. I don't know how much detail you want me to go into each one of them, but that's basically the purpose of these two parking draft ordinances. The banked parking is to relieve a developer from having to pay all the parking spaces initially so that we can see if they're really all necessary. And the second one is to provide, really to make existing commercial spaces in Princeton more economically viable.
Maybe we could have questions on this now?
I believe Councilman Cohen has a question.
Yes.
Yeah. I actually just had a comment that I wanted to make about the banked parking, which is that we already permit banked parking. However, it's currently a conditional use.
Correct.
So one of the changes that's in this ordinance is to make it a permitted use instead of a conditional use. And then the other thing that is sort of different, though not really, is that it is made explicit that banked parking is available to multifamily developments. In the current version of the ordinance, residential uses are excluded. And that's been interpreted in the past as meaning one- and two-family residential developments are not allowed to do banked parking, but that multifamily residential was permitted. That's how it's been interpreted. And we just clarified that to explicitly include multifamily residential as being allowed to use banked parking. So I just wanted to explain those two specifics of what's in this ordinance.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
I'm glad to see both of these.
Yes, it's time, especially for the second one. It's been very confusing. Okay. Well, if there are no further questions, let's see. This goes from us back...
Back to the Municipal Council. Staff is recommending endorsement by the Planning Board of both of these draft ordinances. We feel they will have both a beneficial environmental impact on the community as well as will aid in our economic development activity, particularly in our business districts. So we'd be asking for an endorsement going back to the council.
So it's not... So our task is an endorsement as opposed to...
Well, it's compliance.
...consistency with the master plan?
I'd say both. I mean, it's more important that you say in compliance with the master plan. It meets those goals of the master plan is probably a good way to put it in the motion.
Any further questions on this? We could take them separately and ask questions if that would make it easier to pick out what puzzles you or doesn't... No? Okay. If there are no questions and no further discussion, let's see. I guess what we need is a motion on this.
Julie Capizoli, I move that it's consistent with the master plan and that we endorse it to send to council.
Thank you.
And Julie, that's with respect to both ordinances, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
I'll second. This is Louise.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? If not, I think we should have a roll call on this one.
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And... No further discussion on either of these? I think that the next item on the agenda is the Palmer Square Management Griggs Corner Major Site Plan. This is an application. And it's 5460 and 64 Witherspoon Street, block 2004, lots 54 and 55. So who is...
Madam Chair, if I could state for the record that the notice is acceptable. And Carrie, if you could confirm that proof of publication and service are in order?
That is confirmed.
Okay. The board therefore has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments on this, why don't we move on to this application? Who is doing this?
Chair, I'll give a brief introduction.
Michael, if you could raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Does one or affirm it?
Okay. The project before you this evening, as mentioned by the Chair, Palmer Square Management, it's a site that's commonly known locally as Griggs Corner. It is located on the northwest clearly corner of Wholefish and Witherspoon Streets in our central business district. It's directly across the street and to the west of the Princeton Public Library in Heinz Plaza. The site is currently, it currently houses a 24-space surface parking lot, and which is an interesting situation because it's a very prominent corner within the center of our business district. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a three-story, four-levels with one below, mixed-use building, commercial on the first floor, and then residential above. I'll let the applicant go at the detail about the makeup of the building since they have a detailed presentation ready. There will be no onsite parking for the project. You'll hear that details that the parking will be accommodated elsewhere in the Palmer Square Development and the complex in the immediate area. The property is in the CB Central Business Zone, and it is a permitted use. And the property is not within a historic district, but it's very close to one. There's a, the central historic district is just to the south across Wholefish Street. So those are some of the major points, and I think it's probably best to go right to the applicant.
Right. Who's speaking for the applicant on this?
Tom will start.
Madam Chair, good evening. Tom Letizia, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So I am an attorney with Troutman Pepper, representing Palmer Square Management LLC. Happy to be before you again on this wonderful spring evening. We are excited to be bringing this application to the Planning Board. It has been a long, winding road to get to this meeting. You may recall that we began a presentation of an application for a mixed-use building on the site to the board last July. After that hearing, we were notified by Mr. Bridger about Section 17A-383 of the Land Use Code, which requires a minimum setback distance between buildings that none of us were aware of at the time or had not been previously enforced. Since our 2020 plan did not comply with that ordinance, we withdrew the application and worked on revisions to the site plan in consultation with the board staff that would make it fully conforming. And subsequently, a new application was filed. We are here tonight to present the new plan for the Griggs Corner mixed-use building. In addition to satisfying the distance between buildings requirement, we have addressed many of the questions that were raised during the review of the previous plan. Although this plan is similar in many ways to last year's site plan, we believe you will be pleased with the changes we have incorporated. In our view, this plan represents an excellent example of smart, infill, mixed-use development that will add to the architectural character and economic vibrancy of downtown Princeton. The specifics of the application are as follows. We are seeking preliminary and final site plan to construct a mixed-use building on the Griggs Corner parking lot, located at the northwest corner of Wholefish and Witherspoon Streets. The proposed building will total 15,181 square feet of floor area or 21,244 square feet of gross building area, including the basement level. The subject site is known as lots 54 and 55 in block 20.04, and it consists of 0.24 acres. And as noted by Mr. La Place, it is within the Central Business Zone District. As you know, the property is presently a private metered parking lot of 24 spaces. And as again noted by Mr. La Place, it is not within an historic district. Although, as we will explain in our presentation, this site does have some rich history, and we will acknowledge it as part of this new development. The proposed building will be three stories plus a basement with commercial space on the first floor and in the basement, and eight residential units on the second and third floors, comprised of three flats and five duplexes. The nature of the commercial activities in the building will obviously depend on the market, but could include restaurants, retail, and service uses. While there is no onsite parking proposed, required parking will be provided in the existing Palmer Square-owned Wholefish Garage, a short distance away, and the Chambers Street Garage, both of which, as we will note in our presentation, have more than ample capacity. Palmer Square will agree to impose a deed restriction on the garage parcels, ensuring that the required spaces for the new building are permanently maintained in accordance with Section 17A-388 of the Land Use Code. The project being presented to the board this evening is fully conforming with the zoning ordinance. That is, it is a permitted use, and it complies with all bulk standards. In addition, it complies with all applicable site plan standards. Therefore, in other words, this is a variance and design waiver-free application. Palmer Square will be making an affordable housing development fee payment in accordance with Section 10B-358 of your ordinance. We have reviewed the reports received from the Environmental Commission, your Department of Emergency and Safety Services, Mr. La Place, your land use engineer and zoning officer, Scrab, your traffic consultant, as well as your landscape consultant, with only a few exceptions. With only a few exceptions that we will note, I can advise the board that the applicant agrees to comply with the recommendations in those reports. So unless there are some preliminary questions of me, we can commence our presentation. Madam Chair, we will have a total of four witnesses for our direct testimony. Jared, do you want to swear them swear them in all at once now?
Yes, I think.
That's what we usually do with one. Want to do that?
Yes.
Okay, if the four witnesses could raise raise your hands.
I mute yourself.
Okay. Let me see, I see three. Or is there a fourth?
Josh above you. You see Josh.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Hi, Josh. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please say, go around. Why don't we start with Josh and then work around? Please take your full name and spell your last name.
Joshua Zinder, Z like zebra, I N like Nancy, D like David, E R.
Okay.
Matthew Connors, M A T T H W, Connor, C O N N O R S.
Thank you.
Keen Hughes, K E E N A N H U G H E S.
George, you're muted.
George, you're muted, George.
Okay.
There you go.
Again. Oh, you're connecting.
Not yet.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. George Jackmuff, J A C Q U E M A R T.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. I call Joshua Zinder. So Josh, I know you have appeared before this board on numerous occasions. Madam Chair, I can go through Mr. Zinder's qualifications if you'd like.
I think he's appeared before this board enough times that we know his qualifications.
All right, he's being offered as an expert in architecture.
Wait, Tom, ju- 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 just for the purpose of the record, just if you, I think it's really worthwhile in case there are any controversy, to just have a really, really quick review of the qualifications.
I agree, Jerry. Thank you. Yes. Josh, the abbreviated version.
Abbreviated version.
Okay.
My name is Joshua Zinder. I'm a managing partner at Joshua's in architecture and design here in Princeton, New Jersey. I hold a Bachelor of Architecture from Syracuse University, a Master in Advanced Architectural Design from Columbia University. I'm registered architect in New Jersey and six other states, practicing architecture for more than twenty-five years. Two thousand thirteen, I was named Architect of the Year. I presented this board and others around the state and country, and I'm currently AI New Jersey President.
Thank you, Mr. Zinder. So again, I'm offering Mr. Zinder as an expert in in architecture.
Expert qualifications.
Thank you. Mr. Zinder, I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation. Perhaps we can pull that up.
Yep.
Thank you. Is it correct, this presentation consists of seventy-five slides? Am I right?
Seventy-five pages, and we'll try to note them as we go through.
Okay, Jerry, we'll mark this A1.
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Please proceed, Mr. Zinder.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. Hope you all are staying safe and healthy. Here you see the existing Griggs Corner Lot, which is currently underutilized as a parking lot. The focus of the project was to maximize the utility of the property, fill in where there's a bit of a missing tooth in our communal urban smile, provide new restaurant, retail, and service space, and eight new apartments for our town. In general, improving the civic environment of our downtown without any variances to planning or zoning. The slide two. This site has a long and varied history. In the fifties, it was home to Griggs Imperial Restaurant, which sat right on the corner of Wholefish and Witherspoon. It was demolished in nineteen sixty-three, along with adjacent structures. Many people may recall the properties used at the gas station, which was built in nineteen sixty-three, sixty-four. The Griggs Corner Amoco, which was then demolished in nineteen eighty-seven. It has been a parking lot since that time period. The NFA letter with regard to the gas station remediation has been provided to the town. Mr. Burnett Griggs was a person of significance in the Princeton community for many years, and on the corner of Witherspoon and Wholefish, we will be placing this historic marker, working with the Historical Society and Witherspoon Jackson Neighborhood for inclusion in the Princeton's New Heritage Trail. The neighborhood has changed quite a bit in the last twenty years. In nineteen ninety-seven, you can see the old public library across the street. By two thousand seven, the new library and parking lot had been completed. In two thousand ten, the Spring Street Apartments can be seen, and construction on the residences at Palmer Square was underway. The site, as it is now, can be seen in two thousand sixteen and two thousand eighteen. The site is perfect for walking in the heart of Princeton.
Josh, sorry to interrupt, but again, let's identify
Sorry.
each exhibit and page number, because again, we're having a record prepared.
Right. Page six. The site is perfect for walking in the heart of Princeton, a short walk to the entire Central Business District and University, which will make apartments in this location quite desirable. Page seven, here you see the site in the Central Business District. Page eight, in looking at the site, the scale could fit a larger, more massive development similar to others in town that we are familiar with on on one Palmer Square, Spring Street House. But we felt there were better formal precedents in town to follow. If we look at the buildings along Witherspoon Street and Palmer Square West, smaller scale grouped together.
And this is page nine, correct?
Correct. Page ten, as you see, the existing site is a hundred percent impervious coverage and underutilized as a surface parking lot. Slide eleven, here you see the site from above. Twelve, the existing site plan and conditions. The existing site, as mentioned, is a hundred percent covered with asphalt and concrete. Thirteen. When we previously presented this project to you, the building was to the northeast with the trash enclosure to the west and an alleyway to the north. With the discovery of ordinance seventeen A three three, we withdrew the application to redesign the project to be compliant and as of right with all ordinances, including the number previously enforced seventeen A three three. Here you see the new site plan. This is on slide fourteen. We effectively mirrored the building along the diagonal line, starting at the corner of Wholefish and Witherspoon, flipping the trash enclosure and the alleyway. Now, the alleyway lands on the Palmer Square Development, and the trash aligns along the edge of the Mistral Property Building. The building occupies the southern part of the site along Wholefish Street. Trash is within a fenced and screened enclosure and a decorative gate off of Witherspoon. With a courtyard on the western part of the site, the courtyard will have pervious pavers to help with stormwater. Our civil engineer will discuss this and other site activities in a few minutes.
Uh, Josh, let me stop you here. Can you go back? Okay, and this is slide fourteen. Can you just go into a little more detail about the the setback that is created by this new design compared to the old design, please?
Right, I was going to get the hell out of there, but okay, so the the building from the the Mistral Building property line here is set back at its closest location by twelve feet. This was a requirement of seventeen eighty three three. And by building this space here, it made the most sense to place the loading dock in that zone. If we were to have the loading dock, excuse me, the loading dock on the other side and have this space, the usable area for the building became it really didn't work. And and it reduced the courtyard. It was rather problematic. As a solution, you know, having the loading on one side and and a property line condition on the other makes the most sense for the volume and operation of this building.
Thank you.
So continuing, slide fifteen. Parking for the structure will be within the Palmer Square Lot, allocating thirty-two spots. The residential parking will be on the second floor, and the transient parking will be on the first floor and on all levels of the Wholefish Lot. Residents will have access to the parking lot out two back back doors across the courtyard, and of course, you know, from the street as well. It is important to note that currently there's little demand for EV spots in Palmer Square. However, however, both lots are EV-ready throughout the the lots, the parking lots, and they are set up to add EV spots when there's a demand for more. Palmer Square will be adding two EVs parking spots to the the parking lot at the recommendation of PEC and SCRAB. In addition to the two they already have in the Wholefish parking lot, they have eight covered bike spots in the lot currently, and we will have a bike room in the building, which will accommodate a minimum of fifteen bikes and up to twenty. And there will be an outdoor rack that can accommodate additional eight for retail and service employees.
Josh, let's stay on that slide, please. Just, let's go over this one more time, so it's clear.
Sure.
Okay, there are two existing EV parking spots within the Chambers Street Garage, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so as part of this application, we we are proposing two EV charging spots within the Wholefish Garage, correct? And you also testified that there is existing infrastructure within the garage to add EV charging stations if needed in the future?
Yes, actually within both parking lots.
So within chambers as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on to slide seventeen, we will be working with the town in the transformation of Witherspoon Street. And as you can see here, the new streetscape improvements, there will be some public bike racks at the library across the street. Here. And there will also be some public bike racks directly in front of our building here. Moving on, slide eighteen. As I mentioned, the project will have bike storage, EV charging station, which will accommodate two spots, forest pavement to improve stormwater. It will also have green roofs and a white roof to reduce heat island effect. We will be designing it to lead Silver Standards, but at this time have no plans to have it certified. We will also make the roof solar-ready, running conduits up to the roof, although there is no current commitment to add solar at this time. We will also be reviewing programs like Passifal's Lead and Other Standards, which Palmer Square Management will be reviewing as we move into the construction documents phase of the project. Slide nineteen, when looking at the site along Witherspoon, we felt that the corner presented an opportunity to act as a gate for the Central Business District and for Palmer Square. It was a library tower being on the other side of the, acting as the other side of the gate across Witherspoon. The building as we have designed, it requires no variances. It is within the one point five F A R, will improve the impervious coverage, is under the maximum height, and is compliant with all setbacks.
Was a slide twenty, correct?
Correct, slide twenty. Also, there's a five-foot zone that's being given back to the town along the edge of the edge of the property.
That's a right-of-way dedication, correct?
Correct. Slide twenty-one, as I mentioned, the neighborhood precedents we looked at were of smaller scale assembled structures. Formerly, we have leveraged this to create differentiated massing, to have the appearance of multiple structures, and to reduce the overall scale of the development. Slide twenty-two. From from a use point of view, the lower level will have retail, restaurant, or service use. All are covered with the available parking, and will have residential above. Slide twenty-three, here you see how the residential units mass with five duplexes and three flats, five one-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units. Section, slide twenty-four, the sections of the streets illustrate the building we are proposing fits within the scale of of the adjacent structures across from the library, which you see here, and next to Palmer Square, which you see on this back here in here. And in the Central Business District in general. Slide twenty-five, the Wholefish Streetscape is animated with storefronts, apartments, and the Nassau Inn across the street. It's predominant, it is predominated with one, three, and four-story structures and ends in Heinz Plaza in front of the library, capped by the five-story apartment parking structure. Slide twenty-six, the north elevation of Wholefish, you see the adjacencies at scale and elevation, our structure providing a buffer to the taller Palmer residences beyond. Slide twenty-seven, Witherspoon Street also has an active retail ground floor and has two, three, and four-story structures of various scales and styles. The west side of the street is dominated with the five-story Palmer Square residences beyond. Slide twenty-eight, the west elevation of Witherspoon Street, you can see how Griggs Corner can help step up in scale to the taller buildings beyond. Twenty-nine, looking at the street elevations and sightlines, we see the form of the building will allow us to screen the rooftop mechanical equipment even from across the street. Slide thirty, elevationally, we studied numerous buildings in the Central Business District and found a common vertical grid typically broken with three horizontal bands. We utilize this grid system to create the three facade structures of the Griggs Corner Building, giving each its own identity. Materially, the elevations we are using are Roman Maximus brick in three different colors, as you see here on slide thirty-two. We thought this was a nice contrast to the large masonry on the library and the traditional brick used elsewhere around the square. The corner structure, we utilize large-format porcelain rainscreen panels in a limestone coloration, and the rear and side elevations will have colored stucco, which match the brick colors. Slide thirty-three, the south elevation of the building on Wholefish, you can see the storefronts and the development of the corner structure, the facade breaking into three prominent elements with other features setback. Slide thirty-four. The east facade along Witherspoon Street, you can see the three primary forms, each working off of the same grid, but having independent identity. Slide thirty-five, the north elevation, which is twelve feet at its closest to the property line and approximately nineteen-five inches at its farthest point, we have added a trellis here over the loading area at SCRAB's request to screen the dumpsters. We've also added windows and facade articulation and altered the color of the stucco in response to SCRAB and after our meeting with the staff. We will be adding screening to the fence that's around the loading dock area to have a solid appearance to screen the dumpsters. You can also see the outdoor bike racks that are going in the courtyard. Slide thirty-six, the west elevation of the building faces the courtyard. Slide thirty-six, the west elevation of the building faces the courtyard. You can see the stair coming down from the communal terrace and the green roof and other terrace levels beyond. Slide thirty-seven, here is an aerial from above looking down on the existing Greece Corner Parking Lot. The existing again at a slightly different angle from the west. Here you see on slide thirty-nine, the new building from above in context. Slide forty, we highlight the two roof terraces and three, excuse me, and two roof terraces and two green roof. Um areas and the white roof on top of the building, which we're doing to reduce the heat on effect. Slide forty-one, the existing again at a different angle, this time from the south. Slide forty-two, the aerial view from the south, looking at the corner of Witherspoon and Hallfish. Slide forty-three, the existing site again, this time from the northeast. Slide forty-four, the Greek's Corner Building set in context across from the library. Slide forty-five. Looking at the site from the south, we have a sun study, uh this is the summer solstice at ten A M. Forty-six, summer solstice at twelve. Forty-seven is the summer solstice at three. Slide forty-eight, we move to the winter solstice at ten A M. Forty-nine, the winter solstice at twelve. And slide fifty, the winter solstice at three o'clock. Slide fifty-one, the floor plans develop as follows. The basement level is primarily used for retail restaurant and service use with some residential and bike storage and mechanical rooms. Slide fifty-two, the first floor is primarily used for retail restaurant service. With the possibility of having an opening to the basement level and convenience there. You can also see the elevator and the residential entry and lobby with the connection to the courtyard back here. The previous pavers um we are using in the courtyard. Will have a cleaning and maintenance plan that will be submitted as part of the compliance set. Slide fifty-three, here you have the second floor with two flats and the first floor of the five duplexes. With their balconies and communal terrace, there's also a stair up to the second floor flat, which is right there. Slide fifty-four, the floor, the third floor contains the second floor of the duplexes. And one of the flats and also the green roofs. Slide fifty-five, um there is one uh thing to note on this slide uh from what we had previously uploaded on the municipal site. Um on the municipal site, there had been a, on that version of this slide. Um there was a printing error and it showed two stairs um that were in this location. Um there is only one stair which is off of the roof deck, so that excess stair was a part of a printing error. Um that should be noted and we can get to the revised slide um as appropriate. Um so again, on this is slide fifty-five, the roof plan shows the upper roof terrace and access. And the white roof and the kind of equipment enclosure. The exact mechanical systems we will be working with has not yet been determined. We are looking at high efficiency gas systems. And systems that would work with passive house, but at this time, no final determinations have made yet. We are also making the roof solar ready and the possibility that we will add more green roof as well. Um further down the design process, we will be submitting a green roof maintenance plan with our permit drawings. Slide fifty-six, here you see the view from across Witherspoon Street at the corner of Heinz Plaza as it is today. Slide fifty-seven, the same view to the north with the new building. Slide fifty-eight, the existing view down Hallfish towards Heinz Plaza. Fifty-nine, the same view to the east with the new building. Slide sixty, the existing view down Witherspoon Street. Slide sixty-one, the same view to the south with the new building. One of the interesting things that actually happened in this redesign is uh with the redesign and the change in massing. Uh we were able to incorporate this smaller section in the overall massing, which now. You know, really fits really nicely into the context and the sort of stepping up of the buildings. Slide sixty-two, looking at the view from Heinz Plaza, we can see that we have maximized the utility of the site. Promoting appropriate density that will contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood and town. And contribute a desirable visual landscape through creative development techniques. Improving the civic environment of our downtown and adding to the rich architectural quilt that is downtown Princeton. Thank you for your time tonight. Um I don't know, Tom, if you want to take questions now or if we should move on to uh our civil engineer Matt.
Well, that's uh up to uh the chair, uh if you want to ask questions now or just let us continue.
Yeah, I think it it always helps some people who have questions to. Ask them almost as soon as they've thought of them. So we take a few questions now and if you have a more detailed. Question, you could save it for later.
Okay.
Great, go with that.
Sure.
That's fine.
Madam Chair, I do have two questions.
Yes.
One is, I think I heard Tom say during his introduction. That the uh parking spots for the residences would be split between. The Hallfish Garage and the Chambers Garage. It's, did I hear that right or?
Um I may have missed uh spoke, Mr. Cohen, uh the residences will be have a parking on the second level. Of the whole fish garage.
All right, I I guess I'm sorry. Um the other question I had was whether Josh could just talk a little bit about. You know, the recommendation that had been made by Scrab to um. Remove the gate from the loading area and do a smaller dumpster enclosure. Um. Rather than having the whole loading area serve as the, as the dumpster enclosure. And I think there was also a desire to to not have the fence along the Mistral property line. And can you just talk a little bit about why you found that suggestion be problematic? Which I assume you did since you didn't uh.
Yeah, it's um, I mean, it's it's really a um. This was compared to other alleyways around around town. I know at Scrab, they mentioned the the walkway. That's up against the Alchemist and the Barrister and and it's really a different condition, you know, in in that condition. You know, it's a connection between two public ways. Um in this condition. You know, this is a a effectively a private property, the courtyard in the back is private. It'll be used by the tenants in the building and um. And the the property line, you know, um, you know, isn't. Isn't really meant to be um, you know, an open public way. And um and at the same time, you know, we recognize that. You know, there there were challenges with with putting our loading dock adjacent to uh. To the um, the Mistral Building, um but we felt it was better to have a fence there and to screen it. Than to um than to leave it open certainly. And um and we really thought that having a loading area open to Witherspoon Street was a mistake. And having a decorative gate um presented the best space for the streetscape. Um and and um, you know, we also looked at moving the dumpsters closer to the street, which is also recommended. Um and having a shorter loading area and um and the the. The benefits of being able to pull a vehicle off the street. To maintain traffic on Witherspoon Street really outweighs the the. Um, you know, the 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 notion of having more space over there that you might not be facing a loading dock. And um and for the operation of the building and really for the function of the. You know, how Witherspoon Street operates at this location, it really made the most sense. And I guess, you know, I can be, I think we can recognize that it might not be. Adjacent property owners, you know, uh favorite position. Um but at the same time, when they did their project, they were building up against the property line.
Okay, okay, we, I mean, we can talk about it more during board deliberations, but I did just want to. Uh hear what you had to say about it, so thank you.
So I have a related uh question, is it right if I ask?
Sure.
So uh I'm just curious, uh how much space will there be between the building that Mistral is currently in? And the, I'm I'm assuming the fence uh on on your property line. I'm just curious because the current entrance to Mistral, I mean, I guess there's two entrances, there's one on the street, but then there's also one. It's sort of like smack in the middle of the building. I'm just curious like how that, what that experience is going to be. What's how that's going to affect that business?
It's it's a.
Josh, could you, Josh, could you put a slide up that shows the north side so we see what we're talking about?
Um I have a slide that we presented previously, let me um open that up. So this slide wasn't on. This wasn't part of what we posted online, just to be clear, and we can get your copy of this. Slide, this slide was um was presented uh last July when we when we presented to you. Um, you know.
Josh, we we need to mark this uh for the record. Uh identify what is this slide?
So this is a uh is part of an existing site plan along with photographs. Of the uh the parking lot and the um the Mistral Building.
All right, we'll mark this uh A two, Jerry.
Yep. Yes.
So um. Okay, um the the sidewalk that's here. Um, you know, the property line is uh adjacent to the curb. And so this is roughly four feet that you have going back along their profit property line. Um. And uh so you would, from the street, from the sidewalk, you would walk down and you walk into Mistral. Or you would walk into one of the doors um at the end by the bar. Or you could go all the way down and walk in between the the structure, your open air structure in here. And the and the building, you could walk all the way down that sidewalk.
And uh do you have any uh information about the fence that will be on the property line, you know, what that will look like?
Yeah, the fence is going to be a a six foot high fence compliant with municipal requirements. And it'll be uh uh most likely an aluminum uh black metal. That will decorative and that will have a uh mesh screen um to obscure. Um views into the um. Views into the loading dock area.
So like the people sitting there aren't going to be looking at a dumpster, it will be, it will be blocked essentially.
If you're, if you were sitting there, you'd be looking at a screen fence.
A screen fence, a six foot, okay. Um have you, have you, I'm just curious, have you like spoke with the neighbor? Um I guess uh in terms of the effects that it might have, how it can be mitigated.
Tom, do you want to answer that one?
Well, I only could uh respond from what I know and the answer, and I don't believe there's been conversations.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I I have a question as well, um just about the functionality of using. The the doors to mistrial from what is now the parking lot with the fence and the sidewalk. Um is that, how how well is that going to work or how poorly is that going to work? When you're opening the door, people are trying to get in or get out, it just seems to me it's problematic.
Um, it's a three foot door and it's four feet, you know, um space. This is a. Um. Without getting argumentative, you know, you, you have to resolve, you know, your. You know, accessibility and your circulation and your trash and your egress. On your property, you can't depend on your neighbor's property to resolve those issues.
Thank you.
Josh, but there is full access from the front, right, from the Witherspoon frontage?
Yeah, 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 here's Witherspoon and the sidewalk. And you would walk all the way down, now whether or not in the future they would want to have planters there. Or the planters and the umbrellas and the tables there, you know, that's that's really up to up to them to work that out.
I I just want to make a comment, I believe the entrance into that building that's on Witherspoon. Is to a different restaurant, it's to Elements, which is upstairs. There is no entrance to Mistral from Witherspoon, is my understanding.
No, that's actually not quite correct. Um you, if you were to come in at the end here, you come into a bar. Okay, and the bar is a bar that really works for Mistral's and Elements. And then the connecting room is a joint entryway for Mistral and Elements. And then you have the main dining room from Mistral and their backspace. Um off of that lobby area from Mistral, there's a stair that goes upstairs to Elements. Or there's an elevator in the back corner here that I think go to Elements as well. Um but the accessible route is through the pair of doors in the middle. And that gets you access to Elements and Mistral. I I mean, it happens to be one of my favorite restaurants, I really love eating there, so um I've been there a lot.
Okay.
I have uh just a couple of questions, and I I look forward to revisiting this particular. Conversation, because it, because it is going to seem, I was just going to be a huge difference for for Mistral Diners and. Um. Uh and of course, it's, it it's not about the Mistral ownership, it's about the community. Um and and so anyway, I had a quick question about um parking, specifically the. EV spaces. Um. Decides when additional EV charging stations are needed.
So right, right now, um Palmer Square originally had a charging station in this, in this lot. And um nobody used it, it was not used at all. And they monitor, you know, the system that they have allows them to monitor how often they're used. And when they're used and who uses them, and um since there was demand. Um in the Chambers lot, they ended up moving um one of those spots, those charging spots to the Chambers. Lot, which now has, currently has two. And that same dual use two space single. Um, system will be installed in the Hallfish lot. Um and they'll monitor, you know, who's using it and so on and so forth. And to date, none of the residents have actually requested, um you know, charging space. Um so I think that over time. You know, as electric vehicles become more popular, people will start, you know, requesting that. And they'll see the usage goes going up, which they'll be able to track. And at that point, they will add them because they want to, they want their tenants to be happy.
So they do actively track the usage and.
Yes.
Yeah, that, okay, that's good to know. Um my other question was about the roof. Um I've seen on a couple of different images reference to. A roof amenity also identified as a common roof deck, a rectangular. Portion, and I'm just wondering what the plan is for that, it doesn't show any green features. I assume it's not functioning as a green roof uh in any way.
No, that, I'm sorry, that that portion of the of the roof will have um pavers on it. And it will have some uh low level lighting, which um our um civil engineer will mention. Um and uh it's really to be an amenity for the the tenants. Um especially in this day and age, you know, if you're in apartments, having the ability to get outside. And having outdoor space, you know, we have a number of terraces um off the apartments. But um outdoor space is really an important amenity for um for people living in apartments.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I'm just wondering, I mean, is the plan to put like. chaise lounges and umbrellas there? Or, I mean, do you, is that, is that an area that will have no green?
Yeah, most likely the plant, they will probably have some green that will be with planters that sit on top of the terrace. And it will have probably a mix of furniture types.
Are the pavers, are they permeable pavers as part of the green roof system? Or are they just plain impervious pavers?
So, well, technically they are permeable pavers because they will have open joints that allow the water to flow into the roof system and to be drained off of the building. As opposed to the green roofs, which will, most of the water will be absorbed by the foliage that's on the green roof itself.
Right. So they don't drain to the green roof section. They just drain into the gutters and the?
They, they may drain, we may in the design of it, decide to drain them to the green roofs. But we have to be careful not to overload those because the succulents and the plants that are on there are usually drought tolerant. And as a result, they, they don't take a lot of extra water very well.
Yeah. Well, maybe they can be directed to the root systems of the street trees, which I'm going to have a question about, but not now.
Okay, our civil engineer will be talking about the, the trees in a minute.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
I have a, another architectural question, if I may. You know, I'm looking at this, this beautiful picture and, and I love the big windows, but I'm, I'm just curious like, is that going to be a problem for the residents? Because I feel like it's just going to be like a, like a fishbowl. I, I feel like you'll be able to look right into their apartments every day, see what they're doing all the time. I mean, I guess, you know, whoever rents it out is going to, you know, obviously accept that fact, but I'm just curious, I mean, i- is there any, like, I guess there's blinds, but, you know?
Yeah, so we'll have shades incorporated into, into the, the the interiors of the, of the project. So they'll be able to control how much exposure, how much they might be exposed or not.
Thanks.
Okay, so Tom, should we continue on to Matt's testimony?
I guess unless there are more questions. If not, I call Matthew Connors. Matt, are you on?
I am on.
Could you, you've been sworn, could you briefly review with the board your professional qualifications, please?
Absolutely. So I'm an associate with engineering and land planning. We are the civil and survey for the project. I have a bachelor of science in civil engineering from University of Massachusetts. A master's degree in business from Boston University. I've been practicing civil engineering for public and private clients for about 26 years. Pretty much throughout the United States, but mostly here on the East Coast. I'm licensed as an official engineer in five states, including New Jersey.
Thank you. Have you testified either before this board or similar boards in the state of New Jersey?
I have testified, I testified before this board several times as well as other Princeton boards. And I've also testified in front of other boards in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. I offer Mr. Connors as an expert in civil engineering. Adam, share.
Yes, we accept his qualifications.
Uh, thank you. So Matt, I believe we're on, is it slide three, sixty-three?
All right. So this is slide sixty-three. This is the existing condition survey for the project. The parcel is outlined in red. You can see that to the east is Witherspoon Street and to the south is Hullfish Street. Along Hullfish, there is an outlined blue area. This is a taking from the, for the Hullfish master plan. This apparently is the last parcel on the Hullfish. So this is approximately five foot deep for the entire frontage of Hullfish to meet that master plan for the, for the municipality. Along Witherspoon and Hullfish, we also identify several utilities. There is a storm. We have water, sewer, electric cable. This is a mix of above and below grid, which I'll get into utilities in a few sheets from now. To the north of this is the, is existing buildings. And to the west of this, of our site is also existing. The property is 100% paved and impervious, allowing no recharge whatsoever back into the system. There is a monitoring well in the lower southeast corner. This is part of a prior remediation effort for the project, for the, for the site. And the well will be removed as part of this project. Next. Hi. So this is slide sixty-four. This is our site plan for the project. We depict in the dark gray, that's the footprint of the building. To the north side of the project, we are showing the service area, which is concrete and contains the dumpsters. It is also covered with a trellis partially and has decorative gates to block view from the general public as well as maintain safety for the service area. To the northwest is a paver patio area. This is private and for the residents of the building. We also have bike storage, which is along the northern building line. And then there is landscape areas on the perimeter, which I will discuss in a laser slide. Along Witherspoon, we have a new no parking service zone to allow for access and egress to the service area. This is a relocated driveway apron from the Hullfish side. And then as we proceed south down Witherspoon Street, we are showing new cutouts within the sidewalk area. And this, again, I will hit on in the landscape plan. The sidewalk area for the perimeter to the side, along Witherspoon and Hullfish will be coordinated with the master plan that is currently being worked on for the Witherspoon build out. At, until recently, we were, we did not have documentation what it looks like. And as that progresses, we, we will coordinate with it. Along Hullfish, we have identified paving the full width of Hullfish from the ADA ramp at the intersection of Hullfish Witherspoon west to the intersection of the Hullfish garage. And this is in agreement with the municipality. Rather than half paving Witherspoon Street in our utility work and half paving Hullfish. We agreed to fully pave Hullfish as the municipality is working on Witherspoon and will be repaving that as part of the master plan. Next, please.
Um, Matt, a quick question. Are there be existing easements?
There are no, sorry, yes, there are no existing easements on the property of any kind. The only impacted area is the taking for the Hullfish full width, right?
Thank you.
This slide is the turning movements to make sure that we can get in and out of our service area easily without impacting other vehicle, parked vehicles or cars of that nature. So left side shows entry and right side to show, shows egress. Next slide, please. So we're on slide sixty-six. This is the utility plan. To the north, starting in the patio area, the orange lines indicate the drainage system. Underneath patio area is a, lack of a better term, a spidered area. And this is a network to collect any type of ponded water underneath the previous paper system. This goes to an inlet and then through a network that ties into the existing storm sewer system along Witherspoon Street, approximately at the intersection where our new apron is. On Hullfish, which is where the primary, the majority of our utility work is going to be, we have the gas main, which is the darker orange from the other side of Hullfish. We have two water service lines. One is domestic and one is fire. We have a service connection in green and then we have electric and telecom in the lighter orange. All new services will be underground to tied into the, from the existing utilities underground and into the building. Service meters for the building will all be located in the basement. Next, please. So this is our drainage plan. So in conjunction with the utility plan, we identified the drainage structure to the northwest of the property we have in the gold color that is all the previous pavement system. And in the green color, we have the landscape areas. Again, I will get into the landscaping in other slide. So this previous pavement area and the landscape area is basically returning an entirely impervious site into a partially pervious and partially permeable. The combined landscape and permeable pavement is approximately 22% pervious rather than the 100% impervious of the prior. Next, please. So this is slide sixty-eight. This is our landscape plan. What this we show in the, along the street. So we have along Hullfish and Witherspoon. We are showing five street trees. These trees have been located, so they work well with the building. Don't block the access or egress and provide just a better motive of pedestrian traffic throughout the sidewalk area. Also along Hullfish is a light green tree that is existing. And that will not be impacted as part of our project. On the, in the, the open patio area to the rear, we have two large green circles. Those are against trees. Providing shade. They are surrounded by perimeter plantings, which are mostly shrubs of a smaller species, but provide nice buffering along the fence line. The, the rear trees are of a red bud variety. And the street trees are of a maple variety. All the, the landscape plan was submitted to the Princeton Shade Tree Commission. And they did not have any comments on the trees and shrubs. They did have some suggestions for green buffers along Witherspoon and Hullfish. However, we were hoping to look at the master plan and see how that impacted pedestrian traffic along a basically a busy intersection and retail space. So the preference would be to work with the master plan for any additional green space that, that would be complementing this project.
Uh, Matt, can you describe the tree species that we're planting?
Yep. So the, the, the street trees are a Freeman maple. There's five of them. And the trees to the rear are eastern red bud. And then we also have a mix of shrubs, which are ruby size, summer sweet dwarf, which all their hydrangeas.
Thank you.
So this plan is our lighting plan. It's sheet sixty-nine. We have a mix of lighting for the site. To the northwest in the open space, we have four pole mounted lights. These are only 10 feet tall, so they're not the full stanchion that you usually see. And they provide lighting in the courtyard area for residents. Then along the perimeter of the building, we have wall mounted lights. And these are a mix of 10 foot and 12 foot high features. And this is, this is perimeter lighting to provide safety and courtesy. And then along the roof, we have two sets of lighting. So we have a four sets for again, courtesy lighting for residents. One of the lights does assist in the stairwell egress. And then we have six low level. These are, are again courtesy lighting for residents in, in the open space on the roof. The lighting complies with the municipal requirements. And light does not spill onto adjacent properties to light, light is, is provided per code with no excess spillage under adjacent properties. And I believe that concludes my presentation.
Uh, thank you, Matt. Matt and Chair Connor is available for questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Connor? Anyone?
Yes, ma'am. I have a few. And I can save some of them to, until later, if it starts to take too long. But I'm curious about, I, I recall from some of the memos that there were our landscape architect said that the plans for the green roof and the patio area, permeable pavers and all, just were not detailed enough for him to understand how they'd be built. And so I guess the sort of threshold question is, have, have those detailed plans been done? And if so, I'm interested in how, how deep the area for water catchment is below the permeable pavers? Are you going down like 18 inches or two feet or what? And I'm also curious about the tree plantings. I think I recall seeing that there was a, a proposed four by four foot planting box. And I don't know whether that means a four foot cube or whether there's a four foot opening in the, in the sidewalk area with a larger area for root spread underneath or what? Could you just try to quickly address those questions?
Sure. So, so taking the rear courtyard first. The, the previous paver system is a, actually, Josh has a really nice video of it, but it's a, basically a porous concrete that allows water through it. It is captured into a stone base. The base is approximately 12 inches thick. And then there is an underdrain system that connects any of that overflow that doesn't get into the ground to the drainage system so that there's not ponding and destabilization of the, of the system back there. The trees are in four by four openings, which to be perfectly honest, we were waiting for the Witherspoon Street master plan to understand how the layout would work. But the, the, the opening at the top is four by four. And that is allows the, the surface expression to, to provide for root growth. Underneath that, the, you know, the, the, the actual soil stratification would be as big as the root ball. So that there will be, you know, opportunity for that tree to establish and grow.
But is there room, are there cells or something? And is there room for the roots to spread? Or will the root ball be contained as if in a?
It's not in a box. It's not in a box. It's in, it's in the ground. There's no, there's no limitations to the root establishment.
I see, I see.
Yeah, I see your questions.
I think so. I mean, I'm not sure what's under there with all the utilities and everything, but I assume there's I mean, I leave it to our professionals and our landscape architect and arborist to work with you to make sure that the trees are planted in a way that they can thrive. That's that's my concern is the long term health and vitality of of those trees.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Madam Chair.
We can barely hear you, Mr. Oakman.
Is that any better?
A little bit.
A little bit. Yeah, I'm sorry. My computer is not very good. We may be talking about this later, but I, you know, I'm 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 honestly a little fixated on this, this. You know, the the this the side that 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 fronts the Mistral property. And I was wondering, while we're talking about landscaping, would it be possible along that that fence line where the where the enclosure, the trash enclosure is to have like you know, to grow vines or some some provide some greenery there that would kind of trail up the up the up the fence and 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 provide sort of a better frontage there than than the fence itself?
So the Josh, can you go to the planting plan, please? Yep, there we go. So we are providing three red bud trees along the northern property. This is the closest piece of the Mistral site, so that we are providing some some nice screening to both for Mistral so that they're not looking out onto the to the neighbor's property and also for our own tenants, so that they're not looking into the Mistral. From there heading towards the street, we're not providing because we're basically operations. It just doesn't work well with the flow of how we perceive these areas to be used. And then as you get into the the service area, that's covered with a trellis system to provide, you know, screening from the top as well as the the side area. I don't like suggesting vines of any type. They usually get out of control and they are quite the destructive critters. The runners get into just about everything and then you have quite the maintenance issue to keep them under control. But the the way it's been designed, it's a very nice fence. It's just, you know, it's not a white plastic fence. It's a it's a decorative black aluminum that provides some screening as well as making the area look nice.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Other questions?
I believe Mr. Chow had his hand raised.
Yeah, the permeable permeable pavers in the courtyard area. And maybe the engineers or in our staff can address this. Is it? What's the flood risk back there? You you got the water percolating down. Is there a drainage system to to move the water out?
Yes. So the you can see the my my orange lines here. These overlap drainage structure. At the the nexus of this spider area is an inlet and this whole area is relatively flat, but it does drain to the inlet. So because we don't want to have a problem back there. We don't want water to ponding and destabilizing anything. So as the water percolates through the permeable paver, it will fill up and then it will basically hit the the storm system and that will carry it out to Witherspoon Street. So we get recharged back into the ground. But we don't cause a problem in in that scenario. As far as flooding goes, this is a very small area. The entire street really isn't prone to flooding as a from a from a storm event. And the fact that we're going from a site that's 100% impervious to a site that's, you know, rounding to eighty percent impervious, we are actually getting more groundwater, more surface water back into the ground, which does help alleviate runoff conditions that may or may not be exacerbated by the storm system within Witherspoon and Hullfish. That is your question?
Thank you. Any more questions of Mr. Connors? Hearing none. Madam Chair, I'll move now to Mr. Jacques Mar.
Thank you.
George, are you are you on?
Yes, you can hear me?
Yes, thank you. Could you first provide a quick summary of your educational professional qualifications, please?
Yes, good evening. I have an engineering degree from the school of Lausanne, Switzerland. I have a master's degree in city planning from Stanford University. I'm a licensed engineer in the state, professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and other states. I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I started testifying in Princeton in nineteen eighty-two for the Palmer Square project, you know, north of Hullfish. That was my beginning in Princeton.
Thank you, George.
Any more?
I'm offering Mr. Jacques Mar as an expert in traffic engineering and in parking.
We accept his expertise in these areas.
Thank you, George. So I think you're starting on page seventy of our presentation.
Okay, I'll give you a short overview of the parking and parking impacts and then I mentioned traffic impact as well. The first point here on this chart you can see is the the parking requirement for the residential unit is calculated eight point twenty-five spaces. And then for commercial use, we looked at the commercial floor area, including the courtyard and assumed the worst kind of use, and that would be in this case, a service use as opposed to retail or restaurant use. And that would yield then the requirement of twenty-three point five four spaces. If you add the two and you round it up, the parking requirement for this mixed use project is thirty-two parking spaces. And then we looked at the the whole zoning analysis for the the Palmer Square project, the complete Palmer Square project. Today, the parking supply in the two garages, you know, the Hullfish garage, lower level and upper level, and the Chambers Street garage is a total of a one thousand and eight spaces excluding the on-street parking. And the parking requirement in in October two thousand and six, there was a finding of facts by the municipality, by the borough at that time to to determine what is the parking demand, the parking requirement of Palmer Square at that time. And it was, and that was a moment when the town, the townhouses were added. So the parking requirement with the townhouses was established as one thousand twenty-two spaces at that time. And since then, as you know, there's been a new definition of the basement area, so that reduced thousand twenty-two spaces by hundred seventy-five to bring it down to eight hundred forty-seven spaces. Now, if we add the thirty space, thirty-two spaces needed for this mixed use project, we get to a total of eight hundred seventy-nine spaces. And there would still be a reserve, you know, and that's based on the zoning calculations. There's a reserve of one hundred twenty-nine spaces that Palmer Square has. The next slides and look at the parking demand, you know, because Palmer Square uses a shared parking system. So all those uses, you know, park in the same area. And we basically look at two. We we break out Palmer Square parking into two components. One is the lower Hullfish and Chambers Street garage. Those are the parking facilities that allow the hourly parkers and some monthly parkers. And the total capacity of those two facilities is eight hundred one spaces. This diagram shows the the vacancies in those two parking facilities combined. And this is based on a pre-pandemic parking data. So this is based on data that were collected. And then they were produced by the Parking Control Parking Revenue System of Palmer Square for two, for four weeks in two thousand and nineteen. So there was one week in January, one in April, one in July, one in October to figure out the parking vacancies on the Tuesday and Thursday, on the Friday and the Saturday. And here you can see how these parking vacancies change, you know, from the night hours, one AM to midnight. And you can see during the night, there's a significant parking vacancy in those two Palmer Square facilities in the range of about seven hundred spaces vacant. And then during the day, those vacancies decrease, you know, all the way down to close to two hundred on on the typical Friday. So that's the the parking vacancies in those two garages. The next slide on the next slide is on page seventy-two, shows the same data for the upper Hullfish garage. That's the Hullfish garage that's accessed from Paul Robson place. And there we only have residents and office tenants parking. So they park in a shared parking system. They have always parked together in the same facility. Nobody is getting a reserved space. And you can see, and and that garage, that deck has two hundred seven spaces. During the night, the the occupants in the vacancy is about ninety spaces. And then during the day, and that's on a typical weekday, during the day, the vacancies decrease to about forty spaces at the lunchtime hour. On Saturdays, the vacancies are higher. That's the blue line that you can see in this particular diagram. The next diagram then shows a little bit the reverse. So this is on page seventy-three. So the dark gray area shows the number of cars that are parked again in those two facilities in the lower Hullfish and Chambers Street garage on a Friday. Friday tends to be the days with the highest demand for parking. You can see parking peaks around, you know, one o'clock, two o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday. And, you know, they're doing the night again in those two facilities, the parking occupancies are very low, around ten percent. And then in blue, we show the additional demand that would be generated from the cars that are parking today in the Greek's corner lot. You know, there are about twenty-four, there are twenty-four spaces in that lot. We assumed that they would all shift into either the Chambers Street or the lower level of the Hullfish garage. And then we also add the commercial use patrons from the new mixed use project. That's the line that's shown in red. So those are people that park, you know, that are generated by the mixed use project during the day. You can see there's still fairly significant reserve parking in those in the lower Hullfish and Chambers Street garage. The next slide shows the same kind of data for the upper Hullfish. So that's the 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 upper deck of the Hullfish where we have the shared parking between the residents, all the residents that are living on on the Palmer Square and the office tenants. The orange area that's added is the the parking demand generated by the additional residents. You can see there's it's about eight, nine spaces during the night and then during the day it tends to decrease to maybe half of that number. And then we we assume that the commercial office tenants, you know, that if in case there are employees that the office employees that they would also park here. So that's the other darker, you know, more brownish line that you can see in this diagram. So the conclusion is that, you know, from a zoning point of view, there is a reserve capacity for this additional parking demand. And then from the the real practical point of view, because it's all, you know, in a shared parking operation, that there is fairly significant parking demand. You know, based on those statistics that were collected in two thousand and nineteen. The last point I want to mention is the traffic impacts. When we prepared the traffic and parking letter that we submitted to the municipality, we assumed the worst case use that could be in the commercial space, the ground floor. I we concluded at the time that it would be a walk-in bank and that yielded about sixty vehicle trips. I think it's referred to as well by your consultant. I didn't know at that time that the downtown zoning code does not allow office, bank use on the ground floor. So then the worst use is would be a restaurant and the restaurant would yield about we estimate about thirty vehicle trips in the evening peak hour or Saturday peak hour. And we conclude that that's not a significant impact because they wouldn't all drive through this particular corner, you know, they those vehicles, they they drive into downtown, they park wherever they can find a spot. They may go to the Spring Street Municipal Garage, the Chambers Street Garage, Hullfish Garage, or park on the street. So the fact that these vehicle trips are dispersed in the downtown area means that it's not a significant, it's not a very measurable impact in terms of traffic congestion in downtown. That's my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, Mr. Jacques Mar is available for some questions.
Any questions for Mr. Jacques Mar?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question just about the very last element. You talked about the traffic impacts. And I don't have any questions about the customer traffic impacts or the resident traffic impacts, but rather about service for the for the building and in relation to the loading zone that is shown on the plans. So it seems to me and that there are two ways to handle loading for the building. One is from Witherspoon Street, as so many other businesses along Witherspoon do. And the other is through this loading zone, which requires trucks to back in and out across a fairly busy sidewalk. And I wonder if you can reflect a little bit on the relative benefit or detriment, you know, is it going to be a problem from a traffic standpoint if service vehicles that would be using the loading dock would be out on Witherspoon Street instead? And how do you feel about the the traffic across the sidewalk for using the loading dock or loading area?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, it's always a need that we need to satisfy, you know, the loading that that's the loading demand that's generated by these users. We don't know at this stage, you know, whether it's going to be a restaurant or retail or a service use and and that, you know, will affect the demand. But we also know, you know, it's not a very frequent demand. It's not the demand that necessarily overlaps with the peak hours. You know, a lot of these trucks, they like to come very early and and then back up back into that loading dock. It's in this case, we do not think that there will be any articulated vehicles doing this loading. You know, if this will be a restaurant, the trucks that service the restaurants and that would back in there are straight trucks. And straight trucks are easier to maneuver because the driver can use the mirror to see, you know, where they're backing, you know, in addition to the rear view camera that most of them have. As opposed to, you know, articulated trucks, the mirrors don't help anymore because of the orientation of the the cabin of the truck versus the the trailer. So I think it's not, there's no strong difference between Witherspoon and Hullfish in that regard. And on Hullfish, we have loading areas. We also have loading areas on Witherspoon. So I think the question is more whether the truck driver will use the loading dock, the loading area, or will the truck driver, you know, double park and load and unload like, you know, some of them do it. And it's that's partially a question of the enforcement by the the tenant that will be in that space.
Yeah, I I think there's a no parking zone right in front of the the loading area. And so it seems like a truck wouldn't even necessarily have to double park. And so it seems like a truck wouldn't even necessarily have to double park, but could pull into that no parking area that's shown on the site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I mean, from a pedestrian safety point of view, I think I prefer them loading from Witherspoon, so they don't have to cross the sidewalk with the truck. And, and I wanted to sort of get your blessing that, you know, that wouldn't, I mean, it's not a frequent enough occurrence that it's going to really cause traffic problems on Witherspoon Street. It already happens so often.
Yeah.
I'm just going to chime in to say, I think I agree with Mr. Cohen about this. And one thing that I think of as a, if I were living in one of the apartments or flats up above, I wouldn't want to hear the beeping at 7:00 AM or midnight, or whenever the loading would be, loading dock area would be used by a delivery vehicle that's backing into that space. And so, anyway, I'm just throwing that out there.
Those sounds are part of living downtown, are they not?
Well, I mean, I live a couple of blocks away, and it's not part of my life, I'm happy to say.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Point taken. I mean, maybe it is, you know, maybe it is. Yes, maybe it is for the folks who live in Palmer Square, so I don't know about that.
Madam Chair, may I be sworn in?
Jim, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I swear or affirm?
I hate to be in the position of disagreeing with planning board members. But given the proposal that we have for the improvements to Witherspoon Street, changing the, the, making it one direction, one way in this area, and that we have streetscaping planned for this area. In addition, the site plan that you're looking at shows an inappropriate entrance to their loading area. That loading area is going to be very narrow, or narrower than what is actually depicted on the plan. Because the curb cut is going to be straight out, not curved as it is. It looks like a street intersection, it's not going to look that way. They have to make that change that's not shown. And so the loading area, or the no parking area on Witherspoon Street, will not be long enough for a truck to park. A garbage truck will actually have to stop in the street in order to load the garbage as it does today, along Witherspoon Street and blocks a lane of traffic. The municipality engineering department does not want that situation. So I just want to make that clear. And planning, the planning board can decide one way or the other. I just want to put that, as a representative of the engineering department, we would prefer that the loading and unloading of trash take place off the street. The fact that it's done on the street now is not acceptable, but we have no other, no other alternatives for the existing commercial spaces on Witherspoon Street at the moment. This is an opportunity for us to get that activity off of the street and not block traffic. Thank you.
I just asked, Jim, could you flush out a little bit more why there would not be a flared curb cut? And how box trucks are going to back successfully into this loading zone if they don't have some, some curved access to the, to the curb cut?
Just like any other commercial driveway that we have that is not in the downtown area, curb cuts are straight out. They're wide enough so that the, the truck can maneuver it. But we, we are, we do not, we want this to be a driveway apron with a crosswalk across it, a note with, with a sidewalk at grade. If we have the situation that they've shown in the site plan, and we've already discussed this in a meeting with, with the team, the design team, they would need handicap ramps, dropping down the, it, it, we don't want it treated like an intersection. But this is the normal situation in most other places, that we don't have those flared radius curbs going in and out of driveways, which is this, this is essentially a driveway. We're doing the same thing at 300 Witherspoon. We, we're making them put a straight sidewalk across and a driveway ramp as, as it is in most commercial establishments.
So the, the driveway ramp falls within the parallel parking zone?
Yes.
So that the entire width of the concrete sidewalk is level?
No, it will be, the, the ramp itself will be in the area that is the buffer strip between the sidewalk and the street, which is the same area where the tree plantings will take place. So it's from the curb line up to the sidewalk and then across at that level.
Josh, maybe you can put the site plan up, please?
Except it's not reflecting what Mr. Purcell is talking about.
No, but at least we have something that's close to what we're talking about.
While we're talking about this, could, could we just get an identification of everyone who's participated in this discussion? I mean, all of you have chimed in, but we don't have names underneath them. So could, the principal initiator of this discussion was Jim Puriskell, who's familiar to all of them. But there are a lot of people who attend these meetings who don't know the municipal staff and don't, can't just pick them out by voice and so on. So could we just get a?
So far, Madam Chair, so far, I'm the only one, the land use engineer, Jim Purcell, who's spoken on this issue.
And no other staff member has chimed in. Initially, Councilman Cohen raised it initially, and this is Louise, I chimed in afterward. And then Mr. Purcell stepped in to explain the engineering department's objection to what, to the direction we seem like we might have started to go. So I, I appreciate that clarification very much. I.
It's just that, that these discussions happen, there, there's fruitful, there's something we need to have. But I think that the greater Princeton audience needs to know who the, the people who are interested enough to comment on things were, so.
This is Ms. Sax, I'd like to make a comment. I want to say that this is one planning board member who agrees with Mr. Purcell. And I also think that if you choose to buy an apartment and you're in the downtown area, you know that it's not going to be, it's not a rural area. You're going to be hearing trucks instead of birds, and that's your, that's your choice. I will say, having lived on the second floor apartment on Broadway, I miss the morning trucks. I miss that sound. That's, you know, it's an aesthetic decision that, that, you know, you, you can choose to live in. It's, it's your choice of where you live. And I don't think it's up to the planning board to determine the aesthetics of, of, of the residents and what they like to hear, or don't like to hear. And if they choose to live there, I think they, they know what they're going to be hearing. Just my two cents.
Great. I, I just want to make clear that my concern is a safety concern for pedestrians on the sidewalk. And I, I'm still kind of confused about this, the driveway ramp, because the sideways, the sidewalk is, you know, 10 feet wide. For the most part, there are occasional tree wells. But we're talking about ramping a portion of the sidewalk. And I, I don't know how that's marked for safety, but it certainly seems like a tripping hazard to, you know, to, to interrupt what is sidewalk with a sloped piece of sidewalk.
I, this is not Connor's, I don't believe that's what Jim is referring to. I, I think, for clarity, Jim, you're just requiring, instead of the eight foot radius that we have on the apron, you're just going straight out across the sidewalk. Down as, as a normal driveway apron that you would see anywhere in the municipality.
Yeah, but a normal driveway apron doesn't cut across the sidewalk.
No, actually, I think what Jim, this is my call, will play some. Jim's saying that the section of the sidewalk that's inside where the tree wells are, like the regular section of the sidewalk, will be, will be consistent across the driveway. So it won't.
Right, but the portions of the sidewalk that are between the tree wells will slope in this location.
But why would someone be walking there?
Because it's a sidewalk.
And towards the curb, I don't.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, people use the whole width of our sidewalks.
But, but, but generally, right where the cursor is right now, inside the tree wells is going to be the main pedestrian traffic area.
But I, I, I think we're beating this to death, but I.
You too.
I think there at least has to be some kind of a detectable warning or color change at the spot where the sidewalk is interrupted by this sloping piece of sidewalk.
So you want a treatment similar to the, to the ramps that are at corners for the handicap?
I, I think so. I mean, I, I don't see how it's safe otherwise.
But how is that, David, any different than, I mean, can, than any other place in the central business district where you have?
We have, we don't have any of these that I can think of. We either have roads that cross sidewalks, which are, which are not at the level of the sidewalk.
But we have garages, like, for example, the Hullfish Garage or the Chamber Street Garage, where you're walking along the sidewalk and a car emerges from a, I don't see, I mean, usually in situations like that, you have a sign, just, I mean, I think a sign which says, "Warning."
The driveway into those garages is not at the level of the sidewalk. It's depressed to the level of the road. You don't have a ramp.
There is the NASA in loading dock, that occurs on Hullfish.
There's Pancake House, there's also the, the driveway into behind 12 Witherspoon, off of Palmer Square. There are a number of places where.
Along Chamber Street, there are easily four or five different locations where that occurs.
If I could ask, what did we do for 300 Witherspoon? What kind of markings was there?
Exactly what I'm, no markings, no. They're building, they're, they're, they're putting in a sidewalk, but, but that's a little bit of a different situation, because on 300 Witherspoon, you have a grass strip between the sidewalk and.
Exactly.
And the curb. So you not have that in this case, but you will have planting areas.
So the ramped area happens east of the dashed area, right? Yes, that's what he's saying.
Well, I think my recommendation would be that we ask for staff and the applicant to, you know, work to see if there's anything that they can, they can work out, some sort of delineation. And, you know, but I, I think it's, that's, we're getting really in the weeds here.
All right.
Mr. Cohen's suggestion of, you know, a color coding or something seems like very simple adjustment that might be, I mean, maybe there's some guidance in complete streets manuals or something like that, that, that would be helpful.
We have, we, we have, we have a streetscape designed for Witherspoon Street. That's not, it's about 99% done. But we would like to work with the developer on this project to make sure that it's compatible. And part of that streetscape could be a different pattern of concrete across this driveway apron. Our concern is that the, the other way, putting in the eight foot radius and having it be at the grade of the street would then require two handicap ramps for the sidewalk that is going to be crossing it, because it's going to be six inches lower than the adjoining sidewalk.
Which, I mean, I, I absolutely agree, that's not preferable. That's why I'd rather not have a loading zone at all. I mean, that's.
I understand that.
The point of this is, wouldn't it be better to have loading happening on Witherspoon Street? But, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, and.
But, and, and I'll just repeat, we have a couple of issues with that. Number one, insufficient space. If we were to expand the no parking zone, we now, we, we would be taking away a parking space, which is, it's not unacceptable, but it's reducing on-street parking. Miss Raul, the next door neighbor, may not, may object to that, because the, the loading zone in that particular area happen, would have to be stretched out. I, I'm not sure how it would work. And I've seen the garbage trucks park on Witherspoon Street in the travel lane, blocking traffic so that they can pick up garbage early in the morning. And, and that's not a desirable situation, so.
Also, one of the biggest complaints that we receive are the issues related to loading and unloading on the street, Witherspoon Street. I'm, I'm actually really pleased to see that there's some solution here that's not in the street.
Okay, let's move on. Yes.
Um, yes. So unless there's further questions, I will call our last witness, Kenan Hughes.
Good evening.
Kenan, please provide your education professional background, please.
Sure. My name is Kenan Hughes. I'm a licensed planner in New Jersey and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a master's degree in planning from Pratt Institute, and I'm a principal of Phillips Price, which is a planning firm based in Hoboken. I work with municipalities and private clients throughout the state on planning and zoning matters. And I've appeared as an expert in a number of municipalities throughout the state, including Princeton. And I've also been accepted as an expert in Superior Court.
Madam Chair, I offer Mr. Hughes as an expert in land planning.
Thank you, we accept his qualifications.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, please proceed.
Thanks. So I thought, in terms of my presentation, what I would do is to briefly address the zoning compliance of the property, reiterate some of the testimony you've already heard from a, from a planning perspective as to the compliance of the project. And then briefly address the consistency of this application with municipalities' planning goals and objectives. And then summarize some of what I see as the overall benefits of the project from a planning perspective. And then finally, address the municipality's site plan criteria, which are also mentioned in the staff report which we received. So with that, just briefly, in terms of compliance, again, as you saw in Mr. Zinder's presentation, this project is located within the CB Central Business Zone, in which mixed-use buildings, such as the proposed project, are permitted. I concur with the staff review that the building is fully compliant with all the applicable bulk requirements for the zone. So that includes FAR proposed 1.49, whereas 1.5 is the maximum allowed. In terms of impervious coverage, 60% is the limitation, and this project is at roughly 59.95%. So it's compliant in terms of coverage. The building height is significantly less than what's allowed. 45 feet is proposed, whereas 65 feet is allowed. As you heard from Mr. Jacques Mar, the parking here, all the required parking will be satisfied in off-site parking locations, which is permitted. And then finally, the open space that's proposed as part of this project significantly exceeds the minimum requirement of 420 square feet. Over 1,900 square feet is proposed. In my opinion, then, this application is variance and waiver-free, based on that analysis. The proposed project is not just fully compliant from a zoning standpoint, but also consistent with the goals and objectives of Princeton's master plan. So I read, reviewed the 1996 Community Master Plan thoroughly, and I wanted to just pull out a couple of. and I wanted to just pull out a couple of goals and objectives and some specific statements related to this property that you find in Princeton's planning documents. So one of the goals of the master plan is to encourage the use of sound urban design and energy-saving principles in new construction and redevelopment projects to enhance the character and appearance of the downtown business districts and other developed areas. And this goal is enumerated on page ten of the nineteen ninety six Master Plan. And it's my opinion that this project would certainly further that concept. Likewise, the land use element describes the importance of mixed-use infill development and the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment in the downtown and certainly the redevelopment of this existing parking lot at such a prominent location, the downtown is going to advance the the municipality's goals relative to creating that type of pedestrian-oriented environment. Also, this site is actually specifically described on page fifty-two of the Land Use Element and it references the Princeton Urban Design Study. And it talks about this property as an area of particular importance as a focal point of activity. And the specific wording is, "An area of particular importance in the downtown is the corner of Hullfish and Witherspoon Streets. This highly visible location is a focal point of activity. It is strategic in that it links the Witherspoon Street and Palmer Square shopping areas. The development or redevelopment of this area must be done with care with an appropriate land use that will not cause undue traffic congestion and pedestrian conflicts and with an appropriate design compatible to the scale and character of both Palmer Square and Witherspoon Street." So clearly, this site has been targeted for development for quite some time. And it's my opinion that this proposed mixed-use concept here is compatible and consistent with with some of these planning principles that were set forth in the master plan. And then finally, the Laney's element also emphasizes the need to improve the appearance and pedestrian environment of Witherspoon Street. It indicates that, quote, "Urban design principles should be utilized to create a unified streetscape incorporating such features as tree planting, sidewalk improvements, street furniture, and public art." So certainly, to the extent that the the streetscape plans will be furthered as part of this project, it's certainly significance in terms of significant in terms of its consistency with that particular objective. And then just overall, the fact that this project actually is making use of existing off-site parking resources, I think, is notable in that it reduces the level of in-out activity that would typically be associated with onsite parking for this type of mixed-use structure. So in terms of overall benefits from a planning perspective, I would say that bringing ground floor activity in visual interest to the to a downtown corner site that has been underutilized for several decades is certainly beneficial to the community. There's a significant reduction in impervious coverage. This site is fully paved as it exists today. That will be significantly reduced. And that, above and beyond that, we have the addition of of green roof areas within the the building itself. The decrease in runoff will certainly be associated both with the green roof and the stormwater management facilities that will be installed on site. As I noted, maximizing the existing off-street parking resources is a benefit to the community. And finally, more downtown retail, which certainly, you know, promotes economic development within the downtown. So finally, I thought I would briefly address Section 10B 226 of the ordinance, which are which lists out the sixteen criteria for the planning board to consider in its review, its site plan review of proposed developments. And again, all of these are enumerated in the the staff review that we've received. I'm just going to hit on a few key points relative to each criteria. So the first one is ecological considerations and I'll just note the reduction in impervious coverage, the installation of stormwater management, as well as the green roof that's proposed here, will all go towards certainly furthering, you know, ecological benefits, especially as it relates to improving upon the existing condition, which is a fully paved parking lot. Likewise, as for Criteria B, landscape, this project incorporates interior landscaping within the courtyard as well as additional street trees and the green roof. So again, taking up one hundred percent impervious sight and adding some green space will benefit not just the residents, but the community as a whole. C mentions the relation of proposed structures to the environment. And it's certainly my opinion that the massing and the proposed mixed-use concept here is harmonious with the downtown. And I think in particular, the streetscape diagrams that Mr. Zinder presented as part of his presentation support that claim. D mentions scenic, historic, and archaeological resources. And while this site has not been identified as an eligible historic resource, it's certainly culturally significant in terms of its relationship to Mr. Griggs and that history will be integrated into the development in the form of the the plaque which you saw earlier in the presentation. E mentions storm surface water drainage. Again, stormwater will be conveyed to a pipe drainage system. We have previous pavers in the courtyard and runoff is further reduced by the installation of a green roof. F is driveway connections to streets. And again, major improvement upon existing conditions, which is a parking lot with a lot of in-and-out activity in a what should be a much more pedestrian-oriented environment. So we're eliminating those curb cuts and promoting a pedestrian-oriented streetscape. And the only access here will be for occasional trash pickups and loading activities. Again, that's to be compared to other mixed-use buildings, which would typically include onsite parking, which would generate much more in-and-out activity throughout the day. G asks the board to consider traffic effects of the proposed project and you heard the testimony from Mr. Jacques Marre. Minimal impacts to the surrounding roadway network, mainly because the destinations here are dispersed and we will be using off-site parking resources. Criterion H is the topic of pedestrian and bicycle safety. And in that regard, eliminating those existing curb cuts will further that concept as well as improving the sidewalk and streetscape. And then, of course, providing bike parking within the project itself. Criterion I relates to onsite parking and circulation. Again, all parking will be provided off-site. Only vehicular circulation is the proposed loading area along Witherspoon. J, utility services. This project is served by existing utilities underground, as you heard from Mr. Connor's presentation. K, disposal of waste. As you heard through testimony, you know, we'll have private trash removal here and a dedicated trash area will be provided on the exterior of the building, which will be fully screened. L is noise and of course, this is a typical mixed-use building for a downtown context and certainly, we have to comply with all applicable state noise code requirements. M is advertising features and all signage here will comply with the ordinance. And I think that pretty much concludes it because the last three are really not applicable to this particular project. So with that, Mr. Letizia, unless you have anything further from me, that that would conclude my direct testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Madam Chair, Mr. Hughes is available for questions.
Questions for Mr. Hughes, anyone? No?
All asleep, no.
No, I don't think.
Wouldn't be the first time.
No, no, it was very, very informative.
It's clear, compelling, and complete. There's nothing to ask.
Right.
Well.
So Madam Chair, that completes our direct presentation. Obviously, we're available for question, more questions from the board, the staff, and the and the public. I guess you want to open it to the public at this point. And then the one last thing I'd like to address at the appropriate time would be the municipal reports and our responses to those.
And we can we take a break at this point?
Certainly. How about five, eight minutes right now and back promptly, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
We resume at the top of the hour?
Yes. All right, everybody, let's go back. We were sort of finishing up discussion and I think I heard heard Mr. Letizia say that this was, we had heard the last speaker, so. Did Mr. Letizia, did you have any further wind-up comments or so on before we go into board discussion?
Well, I think you need to open it to the public. And again, what I'd like to do at some point before we do go into deliberations is I want to address the municipal review reports.
Okay.
So you are aware, we have eight attendees tonight and no one has their hands raised.
And they're aware that they can participate.
I hope so.
I hope so, too.
Madam Chair, we can add board discussion and any other further questions while we wait to see if there's any public questions.
It's true, too. Okay, so if the if there are no further direct questions right now, let's let's go into board discussion and throw the floor open to board members who had further comments or questions. Anyone? No? Jeffrey? I'm trying to figure out who's signaling that they want to be called on.
David Cohen is. Yeah, so so I'm gonna just make one last desperate pitch for the idea of opening up the service area to be more of a a public walkway. Mr. Zinder, during his presentation, indicated that he felt this wasn't really analogous to the Chambers Walk, but the reality is that this does connect a public way, Witherspoon Street, to another public way. There's a pedestrian throughway from Hullfish over to Ropes and Place that falls right behind this property. So if there were a way for the public to come through, it would be very similar to that. And just like the Chambers Walk Cafe, the fact that there's a private open space behind the building that could front on that walkway is no different in my mind from the public outdoor space for the Teresa's Cafe or for the Alchemist and Barrister and could in fact be a very positive thing. There are other public, I mean, there are other private outdoor spaces for the residents of this building on the upper levels, terraces and a green roof. And so for private outdoor space, I would think that those would be preferable anyway and that this ground-level open space behind the building could really be activated and made more pleasant in many ways by allowing people to come through here. Obviously, the other benefits are that you can take down the fence along Mistral and make the experience of going to Mistral that much more pleasant for all of those customers of that space or of that business. And you know, to address the question of the loading, I think that I would be very willing to give up one parking space on the street in order to get a functional loading zone that would eliminate the need for garbage trucks and other deliveries to double park and block traffic. You could have a loading zone as we have many other locations throughout town. Eliminate traffic across the sidewalk, which I do consider to be a hazard for pedestrians. But if, you know, the, I actually wanted to start by saying this is a fantastic project. I love the design of the building. I love what it will do for this part of town. I just think it'd be more fantastic. And so that's what I wanted to say and I'd love to hear what other board, how other board members feel about it.
Right, let's hear what other board members feel about it.
Yeah, I would definitely like to echo that sentiment. I I actually have thought about this site for a while now and, you know, I I sort of, the way I envisioned it was definitely infill and I think that this the architecture of this building is fantastic, but I think that there's a huge missed opportunity with that space between Mistral. And I think that to to divide it and to close, to kind of keep it so tight and and kind of close it off with that fence, it's doing a huge disservice to create another fantastic public space in Princeton. I think that, you know, the it could it could definitely be something similar to what we have next to Alchemist and Barrister, which is probably one of the most special places in Princeton. And I think that, you know, it it doesn't necessarily have to have through traffic, but you know, it could be, you know, a very European, Parisian-esque type of alleyway where, you know, you have, you know, outdoor dining, which I think, you know, this this past year has shown that outdoor dining is a fantastic thing and and, you know, all the restaurants in town have been have been trying to figure out ways to make it work. And I mean, you know, certainly, if you're going to be taking away one of those parking spaces in front, you know, you're also taking further opportunity for outdoor dining for Mistral. So I mean, I think it totally could be done. You know, there's precedent. I think that, you know, Twenty Five Spring actually does have kind of this public access to the surrounding area behind the building and then this private courtyard in the back, which is, you know, it's meant for residents, but you know, it's it's kind of open. It's not, it's not closed off like a gated community. So and I think that that's going to be ultimately an asset for, you know, this this business, whoever comes in. I think that that's going to definitely, I mean, you know, it's possible that they might want to take advantage of that space as well. I mean, it could be, you know, multiple, you know, businesses using that space. So I think that, you know, that that whole entire space could be reimagined. I think it's a real shame that they're, you know, you guys are looking to close it off and and turn it into like essentially a driveway with two dumpsters, so.
Hey, anyone else?
Your Oakman's hand is up.
Yes, Mr. Oakman.
Well, I I I I don't have anything new to add other than to say that I I would co-sign on on, you know, what 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 David and Xenon just said. And and I think that that you know, I don't think the applicant, you know, needs us to to tell him this, but I I I would I would echo particularly what Xenon said about this being an asset space. Like, I actually think that that there's if if you can do something effective in that space, then the entire experience of of the community with this development is going to be different. And it's going to be, it's going to be better, not 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 just for people who experience, who 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 go in that space, but sort of for people who who walk by and sort of see it and 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 know it as part of the community, I think. And I think that that's going to redound to the benefit of the development itself. Like, I think that this is an opportunity you know, not just for the town, but for the but for the development and the developer themselves to to improve the experience of this. And so I I would just really encourage them to take take a look at options there. And and I would also say, you know, to David's point about the 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 parking space, I mean, this is important. So I mean, if there's if there's something that if there's something that that if if there's some way we can assist in making this happen, I think we should have that discussion. if, if there's some way we can assist in making this happen, I think we should have that discussion.
Just so you know, Madam Chair, we do have one member of the public has his hand raised.
Oh, well, we, we were going to go back to that point. Do you want, do you want to bring that person along?
Well, Carrie is letting that person in. I just want to chime in and agree with what's been said and I guess offer up the remark that I I understand that it, or I think I understand that maybe part of the rationale for that fence is the good fences make good neighbors. You know, that there's, that because Mistral is right there, removing that fence is almost an invitation for Mistral to use property that belongs to this applicant for outdoor dining, for example, which I understand that, you know, maybe that getting, getting somebody's backup, but I think the overriding issue here is, is the, is the opportunity, as others have described it so well, for a really interesting, lovely, valuable to everybody around public space and pathway. I see Mr. Nuland has joined us, so I'll.
Can I just ask one thing, Louise? Because I think before we go on to the, to another topic, I think Mr. Nuland may be bringing us on to another topic. I, I just am wondering with the, with the guard, so if this, if the fence, if the screening was removed, then is, are people thinking that the garbage would still stay there or is there another place for the garbage? Or would just garbage be screened?
Just the garbage would be screened. There would be a small dumpster enclosure constructed with, you know, nice gates on it and, and, and a trellis-type roof.
And what is, what was the, Josh, what was the rationale for, for screening all the way to the, the screening, the whole area? All the way to the, to the sidewalk?
Well, it's a, it's a loading dock, so I mean, the reality is there's going to be the dumpsters there and periodically there are going to be trucks there and you know, so, so you'd want to screen those elements from the, the neighboring property and you know, I mean, the, the reality is that they have a mid-block property that's facing onto Witherspoon. And they've been lucky enough over the last, you know, numerous years to have, you know, a parking lot adjacent to them. You know, I think that the reality is we're trying to be good neighbors and screen, you know, our services that fit with our building very well. And, you know, I think that this serves the building and certainly serves our client the best. You know, you know, there are all sorts of other solutions that you can bring into play, but as an, as a right project, I'm not sure you're going to be as effective as what we have now.
It, was this the only place for the garbage?
No, we actually originally presented it on Hullfish. And we had, we had the, the, the building on the lot line. And, and it was presented actually after we presented our first half, our presentation of planning. It was brought to our attention that there was an ordinance 17A383, which had never actually been enforced in the 35 years that it's existed, that effectively forced us to either apply for a variance or force us off the property line and you know, our client specifically, you know, said that this was going to be a, an as of right application. That was one of the requirements of our designing it. And therefore, you know, we did look at, at other solutions and the reality of having the 12-foot gap to comply with 383 and having, maintaining the loading dock on Hullfish ended up squeezing the volume of our building in such a way that it, it really didn't function properly on the site.
Gosh, I think Councilwoman Sacks was trying to get at some, get, get some clarification on whether the loading and dumpster area would work just as efficiently if the enclosure was closer in and just was near the dumpsters themselves, not having to encompass that whole area out to the northerly property line.
No, I, no, I, thanks, Michael. That's a good question, too, but actually that I, Josh did have my question and I, I do remember now that that wasn't the original plan and, yeah, it is. Yeah, unfortunate how everything unfolded, but anyway.
Josh, could the, can you explain then for me why that wouldn't work just as effectively to have the enclosure closer into the dumpster facility?
Why, well, if you had the enclosure up against the, the dumpsters, then when a truck pulls back in that space, you're going to have a truck that's looking at Mistral without, without being shielded from, from that adjacent building. And I actually think that a fence along that line is better than just having a curb along that line. If we were backing up the truck into that, they might pop the curb or something like that. And this way, they're going to be required to keep that, that edge clear.
Thank you.
Curious, how, how often are trucks going to be, be there?
You know, well, it'll be trash and it'll be loading for whatever the retail tenant is and possibly periodic, you know, loading for when the tenants move in.
So it's not going to be there permanently. It's, it's more of like a, you know, occasional drop-off pickup type of situation?
Yeah, that's what it works for.
I think we're talking about the possibility of loading from a loading space that was on Witherspoon instead.
Right. Can't you just roll the, can't you just roll the dumpsters out to Witherspoon like probably every other business? And, you know, use that space, you know, for just dining or just having it being open?
I mean, I suppose you can, but I, I'm sure that the discussions with Jim about and, and and the town engineers about how we are proposing a new building and not taking into account, you know, the operations of the building and loading, those conversations would be quite interesting. I do not believe that putting a loading dock and calling for a loading space out on the street when we have a way of getting them off the street is appropriate. And the clients in our design, you know, we showed them that we could fit a loading dock on the property. This is something that they, that they want. They understand how trash moves around and, and loading works, you know, around this area probably better than any of us, you know, having operated a Palmer Square. And they do have, you know, loading, loading and trash areas within Palmer Square and and, you know, if they're building a new building, they want to make sure that it has the facilities to function as it should.
So maybe it's appropriate to ask the owner to talk about why loading from a loading space on the street would be worse than, is that, I, I see Lori's here. Do you want to comment on that, Lori?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth? Okay, please say your full name and spell your last name.
Lori Raybon, R.A.B.N.Y.O.N.
Lori, what is your position with Palmer Square?
Vice President.
Okay, did you hear Mr. Cohen's question?
I did. I think it's been adequately answered by Josh, but having the loading space gives us the opportunity to be able to serve best the residential and the retail spaces for any needs that they might have without interfering with anything that might be going on in Witherspoon Street. I think that once the, the Witherspoon Street streetscape is, is changed, it's going to be very different. And this serves the building in its best way by having our own loading dock.
There is, does the town, like, does the town need to give a curb cut to the applicant?
I, I can't, I don't know.
Oh, I wasn't asking, I was asking you, I was asking more of David or Michael.
I, I think Jim, Jim could probably comment on that and I was going to bring up another subject. You know, there's a very heavily used crosswalk on Witherspoon Street near the corner of Hullfish, directly in front and to the east of this project site. And I, I don't, maybe Jim could comment on this, but I'm guessing engineering is concerned about site distance and possible, possible dangerous situation of trucks stopped out in Witherspoon Street and not seeing pedestrians using that crosswalk to get over to Heinz Plaza and the library. I don't know, Jim, if you want to comment on that.
That crosswalk, I believe in the Witherspoon improvements project is being eliminated. It's being moved to the intersection. And so that's not a concern.
Well, that, it actually is near the intersection now. You mean, it's just being.
At the intersection?
It is.
Yeah.
Right on the corner. A different intersection?
It's going to be at the corner, is it?
It's pretty much there now.
It is now.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, that is, that isn't a concern. When we have the opportunity, we want to have the trash pickup off the street. That's just the, the basic standard. If you drive down Chambers Street, these kinds of openings, curb cuts are all the way up and down Chambers Street. If you drive down even just across the street where between 17, next to 17, I know that's a parking lot. It's the same type of curb cut with a ramp up to the sidewalk. If, if you just look at Hullfish Street, the entrance to the parking lot itself is a ramp up across the sidewalk. We, we are, we as the engineering want to get that activity off the street. It's, it's just not appropriate to have it on the street. And if we could eliminate it from the rest of Witherspoon Street, we would do it, but we just don't have the space. This is an opportunity to do it the right way. And as Josh said, in the rest of Palmer Square, you do have areas where the trash pickup is off the street. And, and dumpsters are not rolled out, trucks are backed in.
Can I ask you a question? In the first plan that you submitted, there was, what, what was in that, that space?
Building.
Right, we were up against the property line in the original plan.
Which, which is where the fence is now. I mean, you're still property line. It's just not a building. It's a.
I mean, we're entitled to put a fence on our property line.
Right, yes, I, I understand.
I guess what I was going to say is I remember when, you know, there was that first plan and basically the question was, so if you move it, what would be the consequence? And I remember the applicant saying the consequence would be that you would have the garbage on that side and that, that, that they had looked at that and that was not desirable. I will say that there were some of us who felt that it was unfair the way things unfolded and we would have, you know, you know, so we would have preferred, although I, I really do like what you've done. You know, I, I actually, I think it's great. It looks gorgeous, but but it, it does seem sort of unfair that, you know, that the, and, and David, I am speaking to you because you, you really were very set on the applicant moving to this and the applicant was very clear that if they move that, that the consequence would be the garbage. So it does seem a little bit unfair for us to now say, oh, okay, well, we don't like the garbage there because they were very clear that that was the solution. So I mean.
I didn't say I don't like the garbage there.
Well.
That's exactly where the garbage goes. Look, this solution works. As I said with my comment earlier, it just could be so much better if we put a loading space on the curb and we didn't have the loading zone. And I, I have to say, you know, look at 25 Spring Street. That's a building that was built on a parking lot, very much like this. And the, the engineers at that, when that was being planned, could have insisted that there be a loading zone and that the building be changed, but they didn't. They put loading spaces on the street. We have a wonderful, you know, little grocery store, DeAngelo's, it's on that corner. They have a much bigger loading zone actually than what we're talking about here because they have all their delivery trucks all the time that need parking spaces. They're on the street because it made the urban fabric work better. And it, that's exactly the situation that we have here. And all due respect to the engineers, you know, they're not urban designers and so they're focused on their issues, but we have to be focused on you know, the, the design of the urban fabric. And, you know, I, I can live with this the way it is, but I just want it to be as good as it can be. And, and to reiterate what Jeffrey was saying, and I guess Xenon said it as well, I just think it'd be so much better for this project, the, the benefits to this project of doing it the right way, instead of doing it the way it is now, are going to be manifold. I mean, it's going to be so much better for this property to get that loading zone out of there and get a pedestrian zone in there. But, you know, that's all I'm trying to say.
Do we, do we feel, feel that people would want to be dining next to a dumpster?
It would be in an enclosure. They would never know that there was a dumpster there. I guess it depends how smelly it was. They might notice that.
You, I mean, you can have, you can have closed dumpsters that are more sealed, but I mean, you know, the dumpsters, I mean, say if, you know, that space wanted to be the, the tenant, the restaurant, potential restaurant that could go in this building, wanted to use that space for dining, they can move the dumpsters to another location. They don't have to go there. I mean, they could go further back in the courtyard or something. I mean, I don't know, you know, there's solutions.
Isn't that what we just asked?
I mean, honestly, I have to, I have to really say that the 25 Spring Street is not an analogous project. The courtyard that's in the back, that's up against a parking lot, okay, that courtyard that's back there, it's up against a parking lot, is never used. I mean, I've never seen a single person occupy that space, okay? The alleyway that's between 25 and its neighbor that has those metal arches over it is, is always a no man's land. And, and they have four sides of their building exposed, okay? And their dumpsters and their trash access is on the parking lot. Okay, they have access to a ground parking lot. Their deliveries happen off of the parking lot. They don't happen in the street. Okay, and if they do happen in the street, it's only because nobody's enforcing them to tell them that they're supposed to be going through the back door. It's not the same kind of project. Okay, there are two opportunities for having the trash in this project and the reality is, you know, our client wants to keep vehicles off the street, okay? And, and working with that, we have one opportunity that put it on Hullfish. And when that didn't work, we have the other opportunity and we put it on, on Witherspoon. And that's the reality. And we can, you can say that you want a public right of way through anybody's property around town. You know, and you can create these alleyways, you create these public ways, and, and they would all be wonderful. Okay, but that's not the economics world that we live in. I mean, this is the reality. You know, you maximize the property for the usefulness that it is. And and I think that this is a reasonable solution to get traffic off the street, okay, in the heart of our downtown.
So I, I just want to respond. I mean, I, I don't think the 25 Spring is a, a perfect comparison, but I mean, I, I brought it up because it was, it has a courtyard that is, you know, semi-public, semi-private. I mean, I'm not saying that that's, that it's a perfect courtyard or public, perfect public space, but you know, it's, it's something that could be similarly done here. And, and you know, I, I think that real quickly, if I could respond to the economics, I mean, you know, if you look at what people are talking about in urban design and city building is placemaking. And placemaking is good economics. If you create a great space, people are going to come and they're going to support the businesses. And that's, this is what I'm talking about. It's about creating a place here instead of a private. here instead of a private driveway and a dumpster alleyway. You know, you, you can, you, you can make something that could be extremely valuable, just ask Alchemist and Barrister how much money they've made off of that alleyway. So, I mean, I, I don't know if I need to say anything else, but whatever, yeah.
What about, um, people, uh, is, is that loading dock also for people, um, moving in and moving out, because I will say that's one thing that's different. I mean, I'm not, I think it might be, uh, challenging to have it, to be having residents move in and out from the street. I mean, that is a little different than the other places where it's just picking up, uh, trash.
Twenty-five Spring has floors of apartments above.
Okay.
The residents are moving in and out from the street there as well.
Mr. Oakman has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Oakman.
You know, and not to belabor this, because we could go on, we could go on indefinitely, but I, I think that, you know, Josh, Josh like partly made David's point and, and what he just said, which is that, that, you know, in twenty-five Spring, the, the courtyard in the back is most obviously accessible from the building. It's not a private courtyard, but it's mostly an amenity for the people in it. It's not, it's not as, it doesn't function as much like a public amenity because it's, it's not easily accessed from, you know, streets that pub, that, that people tend to walk on. It's, it's accessed by the parking lots in the back, and so essentially, you know, to say that it's never used is also to say that the people in the building don't really use it. And so, you know, what, what you're creating, what you're creating by having this kind of like blocked off, um, dumpster space, uh, so that, that, you know, nobody gets back there except the people in this building is most likely an outdoor space that, that hardly anybody is gonna use. And, you know, yes, it's a buil, yes, it's a building amenity, but I mean, I think if, if, if they don't use it at twenty-five Spring, I, I see no reason to believe they're gonna use it here either.
Well, we do have outdoors, we, we have doors that connect to the retail space, the, if we put a gym down here, then they would have outdoor space for the gym, for outdoor yoga. If there's a restaurant here, they would have outdoor dining. If there's any number of things on the ground floor plane, they would be able to be a, a ground floor amenity for that tenant.
Yeah, I guess, you know, my, my point, and, you know, I guess we can spend another hour on this, but the fact of the matter, this is private property, and you know, how much public areas do you need? You have tons of it into downtown. So, you know, let's get some more from this property owner. It, it, you know, I mean, from my perspective, we've come in with an excellent plan. I mean, is it perfect? I guess in our eyes it is. And you might be a difference of opinion, but, you know, we're not, we're not required to provide public amenities. We're providing amenities for our tenants. And we need those amenities in order to attract the tenants. So, you know, there's plenty of public areas right around this property. So we, you know, it just seems to me that in this situation, it's unnecessary.
And the, the connections between public areas matter too. And I mean, I think you put the finger on what the real issue is here, uh, uh, which is that, uh, not the real issue, but a key issue, um, about, you know, forcing the applicant to do something it doesn't want to do, and I, I don't want to foreclose the, um, the conversation about that potential for that walkway, because I think it's, or alleyway or connection point or whatever, but I do think, um, that.
We go down to the corner.
If the wall, let me just finish my thoughts, that if the wall, you know, uh, the black fence slash wall stays where it is, and, um, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to work with the Arts Council or with others and, and, and turn that into something that is, you know, not just, uh, in, in offensive, but is, you know, a, a, a nice thing to walk past and a nice thing to look at. Um, because, because there are a bunch of windows looking at that wall. So, I mean, it's just something to, to think about, and.
My point, um, Ms. Rill, is.
Let me just.
In terms of this connection, one can go right to the corner, which is a very short walk, go right past Halo to the very connection you're, you're speaking about, the Paul Robison Place. I, I mean, how, how many times we have to do shortcuts for people? I mean, it is a pedestrian walkway, maybe people should walk a little bit.
Yeah, Tom, I think you're missing the point. We're not, we're not talking about making public space for everybody, we're, we're talking about creating a place for, you know, Mistral and for, you know, the future tenant of this business. And we're talking about what's in the best interest of the applicant and the neighbor. Um, it's not about like creating new parks and public spaces for people, you know?
Well, you were just talking about a walkway.
I think Wanda was trying to say something.
My apologies.
I was, no, sorry. Of course, the thing I always say about this time of the evening is that we're approaching the end of the time and you're gonna have to decide whether we're gonna carry this or whether we're gonna vote on this. But I also think that we've begun to repeat things. If you think back over the arguments and so on, I know that Leighton Newlin has been sitting there very patiently for a long time. And I think that, that the three minutes for presentation has long gone by the board. So, think about what you want to do next, you want to finish this now? Because I'm not, I don't think we're gonna spend the rest of tonight here. I don't think we're gonna make progress.
We're gonna finish it, Wanda.
Should we go to public comment then, Chair? Sorry? Should we go to the public?
We, we have a member of the public who's been waiting, you're already in public comment.
Well, they haven't been able to speak it, that's what I mean.
Right.
Right, so why don't, why don't we hear Mr. Newlin to start us, maybe it'll refresh the brain a little at the same time, so.
Good eve, good eve, good evening, everyone, and, uh, what troopers we all are, thank you all for, you know, for, for still being here tonight, this is important stuff. Uh, I just want to say, uh, that I agree with many of the people who see this as a, a real benefit for Princeton, uh, and underutilized.
Mister, Mister Newlin, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to swear, and if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm a testimony about if it's the truth?
I do.
Okay, so someone, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Leighton Newlin, N-E-W-L-I-N.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Um, but I just kinda wanted to, um, to redirect a minute, if you will, and I think this is really important that, you know, we're on record for not just the, the, the issue with the alleyway, but I want to really speak to Princeton's history and to the legacy that has been addressed here on several occasions about Mr. Griggs. Um, just very briefly, and I wish Shirley Satterfield were here, this property is significant to Princeton and particularly to African-American history. Mr. Griggs was, uh, a legacy as big and quite frankly, in many ways even larger. Let me say that again, in many ways even larger for African-Americans here in Princeton, then was Paul Robison. Now, please, just, if you would, just, just, just a, a ten seconds of, of silence to think about that for a minute. Now, this, this project here, and we've been talking about a lot of things in this project, but let's, let's really talk about for a minute, if you will indulge me, the, 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 the current national environment regarding racial sensitivity here in America and social justice. And the fact that during what has happened in the, the application process of this project, uh, some of the people on this call, the principals of Palmer Square Management, um, because of whatever, uh, have, have been able to bypass something that's very significant, in particular going, again, to the historical legacy of this project, the twenty percent set aside. Now, we haven't talked about that, but if you will, just for a minute, when, when, when Edgar Palmer wanted to build Palmer Square many, many years ago, in nineteen thirty-nine, he, the, the major problem that he had before he could build Palmer Square, does anyone on this call know what he had to do before he could build Palmer Square?
Sure.
What, what did he have to do?
He had to demolish a lot of the African-American community going down to NASA, you know, NASA Street.
Exactly, exactly. And that's where, that's where Witherspoon Jackson came from. African-Americans were relegated there. So my only question on this call, and it's a very simple, but I just wanted to be on record, is there any appetite on behalf of Palmer Square Management? The ownership group, the principals on this call to take a look at social equity, social justice, doing the right thing? Is there any appetite for them to consider the twenty percent affordability? To give somebody a chance to live in two of those ten units that would not necessarily be able to live there were it not for setting aside the history of Princeton and the history of Edgar Palmer and quite frankly Palmer Square Management at a time when America, the nation, and the world is calling upon places like Princeton, a city that could be even greater than it already is to do the right thing. And I'd like to go on record as asking the question, and I would like somebody to go on record in answering the question. Thank you.
Anyone?
Well, the question was directed to the applicant.
I can maybe chime in a little bit, um.
Josh, with all, with all due respect, you are not the applicant.
Okay.
Tom, do you prefer that I answer the question?
If you'd like, Lori, I, I'll try to answer it if you like.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I can't respond to the history of Palmer Square. Uh, this is not nineteen thirty-nine, uh, will, I'm in agreement with that, this is a new time. Fact of the matter is Palmer Square has, does provide affordable housing throughout its projects. There are current affordable units within the square that are not even occupied or having a hard time getting them filled. So, um, I don't know, uh, Princeton is aware of that. Uh, and Lori can give you more of the details.
Tom?
Yes.
All right, you just said you were referencing the affordable housing units that they haven't been able to fill?
Correct.
Yeah, and I wanted to say that it's absolutely shameful that they're not filled, it's because the credit at the, the credit uh, level that's required is incredibly high, and it's, uh, I, something that there is legislation that is pending that would make that illegal, it's, 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 I mean, it, it's, it's, it's appalling that those units have been empty for so long.
It's not for lack of demand, that is for sure.
And I mean, to bring that up in this context was definitely not the, the right thing to bring up. That is not, that is, that you're not helping the applicant by raising that at all, I just have to tell you that.
There are things that have loosened up though, with respect to the availability of mortgages for sale unit, affordable units.
These are, these are for, these are rental units?
Oh, these are rental.
Rental units, and when Palmer Square Management built the townhouses, they refused to include the affordable units in the townhouses. They insisted on having them in another place separately so that those in the affordable units would not be housed together with, with the, with the main, uh, residents. And so, and, and as, I don't know if those affordable units have ever been, um, uh, if anyone has ever lived in them, but it's been, as far as I know, at least the last decade, they have not been inhabited, and it, it's just shameful.
I, I, I feel the need to respond, we have ten affordable housing units in Palmer Square. Currently, we have two that are vacant. One is a two-bedroom, it's been vacant for three years, almost, August thirty-first of twenty eighteen, it became vacant. It's a very nice unit, it's one of the newer units that was actually built. Um, we also have another unit, which is a studio unit that has been empty since August thirty-first of twenty nineteen. While we do have, um, a credit criteria that was cleared through the past developers' agreements, which I cannot speak to because I was not a part of that submission, I was only in the hotel at that particular point in time. Um, I weigh everything when it comes to trying to get those units filled. And the applications, while it has gotten better and we have started to receive some more, there was a very long time that we were getting very few applicants from PCH that got approved, not only do they have to meet our approvals levels, they also have to beat the approvals of the PCH levels. So sometimes we would be approving and then they would get denied. Now, I believe the process is that PCS, PCH is approving them so that then when they come to us, we know that they've already been approved, they're a solid candidate, and we have made exceptions to the rules. To be able to fill the units, we, we understand, particularly in these times, that things have gotten harder on people, um, and, and this is a wide variety of people.
Lori, I mean, this is, we're, this is sort of, we're, we're, we're going astray, this is not about the application, it's a he said, she said, but I, I know that our Affordable Housing Board and Princeton Community Housing has been extremely upset about those units for a long time. So, I mean, I think let's just leave it because it's not related to this application, but Tom, I would just say that is not helping your applicant to bring that up, I would recommend going in a different direction.
Well, the only other thing I can say is, you know, this project complies, we're complying with the affordable housing uh, developer's fee requirement. And the town as a whole is providing a significant number of affordable units in the coming months and years. So, again, looking at it from a total perspective, Princeton is providing a significant amount of affordable units for the community as a whole. So, obviously would include the downtown.
Chairman Gunning, I, I just want to say, uh, in response, thank you for, for allowing me to ask the question. Uh, you know, I, I've heard the applicant's answers. And, uh, you know, sometimes there are non-answers to really tough questions. And I think that's what we have here tonight. Uh, and again, I just want to say, when, when we hear the applicants talk about how great an opportunity that they have on the corner of Wholefish and Witherspoon, they are absolutely right. But the greatest opportunity that they had in this endeavor, they have completely and totally missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, board members, let's. Chair, should we see if there's anyone else in the public, Carrie? Carrie?
Uh, no, then no one else has, has their hands raised.
All right, um, we're at the point where we have to decide, are we going to, to vote on this? Are we going to put it aside and argue it, but another week or so about how things are going to be laid out or not laid out? What, what's your pleasure at this point?
Sorry, Madam Chair, do we need to close public comment?
Hmm? Sorry?
Close public comment?
No, we can, I just want to know where we're going and then I will close public comment.
Well, I, I would like to understand, Mr. Lattisia said early on that they agreed with most of the um, recommendations from the various, um, from our professionals and from the boards and commissions that review applications and, um, but that they, but there were a few things they weren't going to agree to, and so i- in the spirit of getting through. i- in the spirit of getting through, if at all possible, getting through things tonight. And knowing that Mr. Letizia wanted to go through the memos, or at least I thought or heard him say that, if there aren't any more public comments, then maybe he could tell us which recommendations he's not agreeing, that the applicant is not agreeing to accept.
He had provided a document, but it was, it just came in today, so he can present that. That should address all of the
Right, let's, let's, let's just ask, are there any more public comments or shall we close that portion? Anybody?
Close it.
Okay.
I see nothing.
All right, so I need someone to, to move that the public portion is closed. Someone? Okay, in a second?
Second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Closed. Jeffrey, did you have something you wanted to say? All right, so let's assume then that the, the public portion is closed and that we're back to either having discussion or we're going to vote. Which do you want to do?
Madam Chair, I believe Ms. Wilson would like to hear our responses to the municipal reports.
Unless there's other board members who want to discuss something else before we go there, but I doesn't look like there is, there are, whatever.
Tom, just the one, just where there's a, just the ones where you're not in agreement.
Sure. Okay, as Ms. Philip indicated, I did submit a letter from
Can I share my screen? I have it.
Yes, if you could, Josh, thank you. A 15-page letter from Josh's, Zinder's office dated April 8th, 2021. It's now on the screen. Jerry, I'd like to mark this as Exhibit A3. Record. What this letter is, is a comprehensive response to the multiple number of reports we received from staff, consultants, and commissions. I wasn't planning on going through point by point, but rather just highlight where we may have a disagreement or a need for further clarification because most of these items were addressed as part of our testimony. And I think Mr. Mueller can utilize this document when it comes time to preparing a resolution. I guess the, the first item where there is a disagreement would be in Mr. La Place's memorandum dated April 6th, 2021. Item six, and this is the topic that we were just discussing for the last hour, I guess, having to do with a, an alleyway or pedestrian connection along the northern, northerly edge of the property. I think we've made our position clear. We do not agree. The next
All right, Tom, which one was that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, keep going up, Josh. I'm sorry, page two of your letter, item six.
There you go.
There.
Tom, go back to, go back to item two of, of Michael's memo. Where the applicant agreed to provide details on maintenance of the courtyard and green roof, but it didn't say anything about the design. And of course, that was also a major point in Dan Dovremilsky's memo and maybe others. So
Of course, yes, that, that will include design. Designed already.
Thank you.
Okay, so then moving on to the next report, which is engineering and zoning, that which begins on page three. We're okay with all those items, the first one where this is really just a point of clarification. There's no disagreement here. It's on page four. Item I1. Right there, Josh, under onsite parking circulation. This has to do with whether the basement level counts towards the determination on parking per your ordinance. It does not, it does not constitute floor area. And, and that's how we get to 32 parking spaces. I believe your zoning officer agrees with this analysis. So it's 32 parking spaces required for the proposed building.
Tom, before that, could I ask Jim Purcell whether, Jim, this is on item E, a number one? Whether you're satisfied that the, the detail that's referred to in the response by, by the applicant is, is sufficient?
Roll up to it. Yes, yes, they, they worked with me in order to provide that detail, actually.
Okay.
The next item where I guess we have disagreement would be page seven. The SBRAB memo, and again, a lot of this has to do with the topic we've been talking this evening. Item one. They were suggesting the pedestrian connection on the northern property line. Again, we do not agree to provide that. In terms of item two, we have provided windows on the northern wall as SBRAB suggested. However, we're not proposing any ground floor storefronts along that facade. Item four. Again, this all relates to the trash removal area, the loading area. And then, again, there'd be some public access to the, the rear courtyard. Again, we don't agree with that. And obviously, we, we presented our plan for the treatment of that area.
And Tom, for number, for number four on page seven, it, it was referred to as a trellis, as opposed to a pergola. So it is a trellis, correct?
Mr. Zinder, what is the correct term for that structure?
I would say it's probably a trellis. Pergola implies that it's enclosed, where this is covered but open.
Yeah, it needs to be open so that it doesn't count as floor area, correct?
Correct. And we did review that structure with the zoning officer. And it, it, it would comply with, as a trellis, not, not having any FAR.
Okay. Number five is the, the topic of relocating the loading space to the, to the street. We, we've talked that out in this session. Our proposal is to have it off the street on our property.
I'm sorry, Tom, where, where are you again?
That's still on page seven. That was item five, Jerry.
Oh, it's page seven, I'm sorry, okay.
Page eight, the report from Princeton Environmental Commission. Item one, as Mr. Zinder testified. We will design to lead silver standards in terms of incorporating part of energy, zero energy ready home requirements or passive house requirements. Mr. Zinder testified that that's something will be discussed with the owner. Right now, we can't, we are not committing to, to those requirements, but it's something they'll, they'll consider. Number two, solar panels on the roof, as we testified to. They're not currently being proposed. We will though have the roof ready for their installation if if the owner determines that we'd like to use solar panels. Item three was the suggestion of increasing the vegetative roof coverage on the building. Mr. Zinder testified that we will look into investigating, perhaps expanding the green roof areas. So we'll make that commitment. Item four, transportation. Actually, I think we, we basically met this suggestion, the odd one station for two spots, which we were doing for two EV spots. And in fact, we have conduits for more than six if we need them in the future. Entire garage. Page nine, shade tree commission. Items one and two here, this is more of conflict between what the shade tree commission would like and what the municipality's plan is for the streetscape with their spoon. So I guess there has to be some decision made on what the landscape treatment's going to be and then we obviously will abide by that. The, the shade tree commission is proposing the creation of lawn strips along the street scape and I believe Mr. Place is not quite in agreement with that. So, again, we'll have to work with your staff on ultimately what what kind of treatment's going to be implemented there. I'm going to turn to my team for a second. In terms of the report from Dan Dovremilsky. Do we have any issues there? That need to be discussed? Matt or Josh?
I was muted. Now, generally, we have a problem providing additional details for the constructability and I think our landscape plan complied with the shade tree view. It was just a matter of providing a bit more detail for the landscape architect.
So we'll be providing additional details, you know, when it comes to the landscape documents, those will be submitted at time of compliance set. And when it comes to like the rooftop green detail, green roof details, those will be submitted with our construction documents. The maintenance plans can all be submitted with with the compliance if, if, if we're, if required.
Yeah, I guess the, the one item where there might be some discrepancy is item eight on, on page 12.
Tom, can we, can we stay with three? Just wanted to get a reaction from our staff, from Michael and Jim, where they're proposing this, this additional information about the design of the open space courtyard, et cetera, et cetera, at the time of construction permitting. Don't, do we want to have that earlier so that we can review it as part of compliance?
Yeah, and I, and I think Josh just said that that was what was meant here. So that should
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I would also point out that they have already, in their most recent iteration of plans, provided a significant amount of this. So it, it, it's not between the time that we got the landscape report from Dan Dovremilsky and the time that they've appeared before you tonight, there, there have been significant changes and, and more details provided already. So yeah, it, it should be done with
If I can just chime in, I was going to suggest that they come with the fencing design to the landscape subcommittee. And I think that letting the landscape subcommittee look at the details for that courtyard would be appropriate as well.
I, I think that the landscape subcommittee should look at the, the entire landscaping, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I think that may be it, just What is that, Josh? I'm sorry.
I, I thought you had mentioned
Oh, and on item eight, as noted by Mr. Connors of the tree species and sizing that we're proposing comply with the shade tree commission. Which might be different from what Dan is.
It is. I, I, I don't think the shade tree commission actually what, what the height of the trees would be.
They didn't our first review. We, we upsized the container requirements based on shade tree commission in the first round back last year.
Well, what about the idea that the clearance had a seven feet?
So this is in regard to the, to the rosebud trees in the, in the back, which
I don't think Dan was talking about the rosebud trees. I think he was talking about the other two trees in the
No, he, he was talking about the red buds, which are the trees in the, in the courtyard. It's two red buds.
There's two other trees in addition to the three red bud.
There's actually five. There's two different species. There's three that are along the northern and then there's two that are in the actual courtyard. And on top of that, there's five that are on the front and those are not red buds, but so the, the, the sizing of them was appropriate to the footprint that they were taking.
Okay, let, let, let me just halt things again. It's, it's after 11 o'clock. Were you thinking that we were going to sit here until we solved all of this? Because that's not going to work.
We're basically done with going through this, Madam Chair. I was just going to know one other item under the traffic. Item eight, page 12.
So, so, so Tom, then on item number nine, you're not agreeing with the with Dan's suggestion as to the two trees in the courtyard that has a, at planting, they would have a clearance of seven feet.
I don't think that's a big issue. It's not, yeah, it's not, if you weaken upsize it to the next size up, I think they're like they go from seven to 12 or something like that.
Okay.
I, I think Wanda raised a really important point and I know it's a it's shared by other members of the board that 11 o'clock is when we should stop. And, and we're not completely done. And I, I wonder if, given that we have this set of responses from the, from the applicant. Can we give Jerry the green light to prepare a resolution? And, but not vote on it tonight to prepare a resolution that's circulated to the board that we vote on at a subsequent meeting? Or is that just totally
I, I just got to say, we, we have really tortured this applicant for more than a year and
Well, I understand that, but I, I, I don't and, and do not want to sit here for another 15 minutes and I think it's, and I know I'm the one that helped, took us to 1 o'clock recently. helped took us to 1 o'clock recently, and that's just bad practice. I don't want to do that again, and I and I want to respect Wanda's, you know, trying to bring things.
I agree, but I, we have gotten
Actual clothes.
We have gotten a lot of complaints from the public lately that we are almost finished, and then we we close at 11, and then they have to wait and come wait a few weeks and come back again to just find out what happens at the end. And I I do think that we are very close. I unless, is there more than five minutes left? Because I don't, I think we are, you know, I would be ready to move. I would be ready to to move voting on this. I mean, I think we we have a very full schedule coming up, and I, you know, I I just
Just to jump in there, though, I I mean, it did seem to me like, and maybe some of these aren't big issues, but it seemed like there were a lot of things that Mr. Letizia went over that they're not complying with. So I feel like it it may take a little while to go through this and understand which things you know.
There really aren't a lot of things that
Really isn't. It really, you know, several reports say the same thing.
The exact same question.
It it sounds like a lot, but it's the same topic, which is essentially the northern property line.
Yeah, and I I would point out that there were, a lot of these were suggestions. They were not requirements.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree with Tom. I think really the only, in my mind, the main outstanding issue, and maybe the only one, is the question of should there be a pedestrian path along the northern property line? And maybe related to that is a fence question. And obviously, there was discussion about that earlier. I know Tom takes a position that we really can't require that. Now, having that kind of porous site is so consistent with with the the best places down downtown. And I think the question was raised is to, can we, are we obligated to provide a curb cut? I don't think we are. But if we're going to provide one, I think we could condition in a way which requires this pedestrian access that goes to the the pedestrian path connecting Paul Robson Place and and Holfish. But I think that's the main issue.
Well, the property has one existing curb cut, and it will have one curb cut in the new plan. So you know, who provides it? I mean, I think that's a different story. But it needs to have a curb cut. It has one now. It should have one in the future.
You know, instantly saying, I do think we have the power to 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 require that pedestrian path, but it's a, that's a decision by the board.
I think my inclination would be to move the application as submitted. But to offer, and and I would like to include this possible, that we will give you that loading space on Witherspoon Street in a couple of years when you realize how wrong your decision was not pedestrian path through.
And were you making that as a motion, David?
Yes.
I'd like to second that.
I'll suck it up. Yeah. Either way.
Is that the only thing standing between us and closing this? Yes.
Well, the only, the only other conditions. What we've done kind of across the board when we've had these extended presentations of design aspects of of the site plan is, as we do in Exhibit A1, is we impose a condition that says that the the site plan elements in that in that exhibit have to be implemented. And then we talked about the affordable housing fee. Let me just see if I have any others.
I assume that all of the conditions that are articulated in the memo from Jim Purcell and Derek Bridger are acceptable, right?
Yes, basically, they're, yes, I think they're, they're
Yeah. All right.
environments.
And the other condition was that the access to the loading area has to be changed from this flared access to straight as per Jim's comment a while back.
And the applicant's agreeable to that.
Yeah, and then the previous papers in the courtyard, the cleaning and maintenance plan is part of compliance. We discussed that, and I think that's, I don't think you have any others.
I just want to make sure, Jerry, you've got that the landscape subcommittee will review the landscape details and the fence details.
Yeah, I I have that. I'm sorry.
Okay, so we had we had a motion from David.
And Mia seconded, and so did Xenon.
Right.
Xenon thirded. Thirded. There are three motions.
Can can somebody state it again? I think, you know, David said something about we would do something in two years, but I wasn't totally clear on what we're doing now versus in two years.
We're approving the application as submitted now. And in two years, we're going to give them a loading space on Witherspoon Street when they decide they want to open up the pedestrian path because it's going to make it a better project.
But but is that something we would only do if they ask for it, or that
Yes, yes. We'll only do it, we'll only do it if they ask for it.
So it's
An invitation.
Loading.
It's visionary and aspirational.
Yes.
You know, we right. Thank you.
Can we, can we also hold off on the fence? Can we, can we say in in five years, you can build a fence?
I I don't think we'd want the the truck movements and the garbage to be visible.
Yeah, I think it starts to get into safety issues.
But we do get to review the design of the fence. Landscape Subcommittee will.
So when when we say the pedestrian walkway, though, so we're saying that, like, you know, the public can have access to the pathway or whatever? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And then, and then five years, if they want to close it off and get that curb cut, they can.
No, 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 no.
Oh.
First.
Oh.
They're going to get the curb cut now. They're going to close it off, and then
Okay.
years, they'll realize they made a mistake.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, is that everything, everybody? And this is all tacked on to David's motion?
Which is preliminary and final major site plan approval.
Yes.
With the condition, with the conditions we've just talked about.
It's, that's everything, right?
Yep.
Okay, and we have both a motion and a second for that. All right, shall I have Carrie call the role? Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson? Mr. Chow?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, all of you.
Very good discussion. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I have to say that even though I I gave you guys such a hard time, I I think that is a great project. I'm glad to see that parking lot.
It really is a wonderful project.
Thank you.
One thing, one thing that we didn't spend a lot of time talking about, but could the lit, when the landscape plan is reviewed in detail, could we also see details for the historic marker, how it's going to be installed, and what it will look like on the
Sure. Yep.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, have a wonderful evening. What little is left of it, and we'll see.
I'll move to a jern. Good.
Take care.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, everybody. Have a great weekend. See you next week.
Bye. Yeah.